We all ready? Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, April 7th work session. And we have some special guests in the audience, which we'll get to shortly. Let's call roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Connolly, here. Downs, here. Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder, virtually?
Here, virtually.
Ms. Underhill?
Here.
Mayor Hardy?
Here.
I have a motion for Mr. Snyder to participate electronically. Mr. Snyder, could you please identify your remote location and reason for participating by electronic means?
Thank you. Warsaw Polan Medical Mission with the refugees of Russia's war on Ukraine.
We have a second?
Well, I need to do the first, which I moved that I was writing location down. I move that City Council approve electronic participation by Councilmember Snyder in this meeting for personal reasons pursuant to the City Council's adopted policy.
We have a second? Second. Ms. Connolly in the second. Can you call roll, Cindy?
Yes, Mayor. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Hiscott?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. That passes.
Great. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you very much.
So we have a very meaty work session tonight, but before we get into the most of our topics, which is budget related, we had invited special guests from COG as well as NVRC to join us to kind of share the regional kind of perspective on what's going on with Northern Virginia and the DC region. I think that's really important backdrop and context as we deliberate on our budget. So thank you to Greg Goodwin from COG, as well as Bob Lozaro and Jill Kanna from NVRC for joining us. Wyatt, I don't know what the right order is and how you want to take it from here, but.
Thank you, Mayor Hardy, and welcome to our guests. I think maybe we'd have the COG presentation first with Mr. Goodwin. And then from there, Bob and Jill will provide an update from the Northern Virginia Regional Commission. I just want to join the mayor and the whole council in thanking COG and NVRC for all the work you've been doing in support of local governments and support of the entire national capital region. One, to understand the data of the changes that are happening to the capital region right now, and then work with communities to try to mitigate some of the adverse impacts that we're experiencing. So thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you for inviting me for tonight's discussion. I, six months ago, I was in the middle of working on the cooperative forecast in which a number of our jurisdictions in the region are participating in. Have also been working on the activity center update as well. So it just seems like in the last month or so, so much in our region has changed because of what is currently going on with the new administration. But today, I wanted to talk a little bit about kind of the data that we have been tracking over the last month and a half or so. And just to let folks know that Clark finds all of this to be very important for COG in terms of kind of looking out for our member jurisdictions and just kind of looking out for the region as a whole and the potential impact that we're seeing in terms of the reduction of federal workers within our region. So tonight, I'd like to really, you know, talk about federal workers, less about federal jobs. There is a difference between federal workers and federal jobs. Workers are where people live. It's the kind of the residential component of that. Obviously, the jobs are important too, but we have felt very strongly that there's a lot of information out there. There's a lot of sources. The Congressional Research Service has published a number of studies regarding federal employment, not only in our region, but among all the states in the United States. This is another relative data source that many jurisdictions and many agencies are looking at as well. And I would be the first one to say that, you know, we have just initially started looking at the census data. And we have been reviewing the census data now for a couple of months. We have a little bit of experience looking at these data sets, especially with some of the federal shutdowns that have been previously, that have occurred. And so we do have some knowledge of some of the information that the Census Bureau does, in fact, publish for the country and for our region. So, next slide. So I really want to kind of start with this slide. This is a, some data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics in terms of at-place employment. This is data going back to the 1990s. This is the, the number of federal government jobs located within the MSA. Not the COG region, but the MSA, which is a slightly larger geography than the COG region. But I think it gets the point across that you can look at these different colors of slices of the different administrations for the different years. And it really does show, it really drives home the point of the stability that we have had, that we've experienced with the number of federal government jobs in the region. And it's been fairly consistent over the last 30 years or so. Even during the Clinton years, we did see some reduction in, in the federal workforce in our region. And obviously, during the Trump years, during the first term, you know, there was relative stability during that period, and it continued through the Biden years. So we're now looking at the most current data that is available, 2024. It will be sometime until 2025 will be available. Next slide, please. So it just seems like there's not a day that doesn't go by that we see and read and hear all sorts of information about potential layoffs for different agencies within our region. Obviously, some of the information is relatively new. We do hear quite a bit about how layoffs are occurring, probational workers are being let go. But then there are these, these glimpses of good news where some people are brought back, but we never know like how long that will last. But obviously, for this Northern Virginia region, a lot of jobs related to DOD. In Maryland, we do have quite a bit of, of a federal presence in terms of jobs at NIH and NOAA and that type of thing. But just really want to get it, the point across is that there's just so much news that just is coming out every day regarding the workforce reductions that we're starting to, to see. Next slide. So again, just to kind of reemphasize, there are a number of different data sets, different sources of data. COG is relying on data from the US Census Bureau, the American Community Survey. That is data that is regularly updated. The most recent data release was for 2023. There's two data products related to that release, a five-year and a one-year estimate of data. And for our work, we are looking at the five-year estimates. Next slide. So again, this is not jobs at place, but these are workers. These are, these are the, the people that live in our neighborhoods, the people who live on our streets. These are the workers that are counted through a survey by the Census Bureau. And it's, I think, at, at the regional level and at the jurisdictional level, I think it's, it's, it's a very good data set that we're relying on. There is a particular table called class of worker, and that is the primary data sets that we are looking at. And this is where this data is coming from. So just as an example, if you look at the District of Columbia, it has about 63,000 federal workers that reside within the city or the district. And they represent about 22% of the workers that reside in the district. For Maryland and Virginia, we do have data sets for, for those major jurisdictions. We've also been kind of tracking not only the counties within the COG footprint, but jurisdictions that are outside in Virginia and Maryland. Next slide. So specifically, we can kind of get down to more specific levels of geography. In this slide, I was able to pull together the three jurisdictions that I think are relative to the City of Falls Church. Fairfax City and Fairfax County. I included the numbers for the number of federal workers within those jurisdictions as well. The one thing that I would like to point out, and I think Joy may or may not mention this, that in smaller geographies like Fairfax and Falls Church, there is a significant margin of error associated with, with geographies of this size. So I think it's important to kind of keep that in perspective when you look at this data. I think at Fairfax County and then at that jurisdictional level, I think that number is fairly reasonable. And I think kind of reflects kind of the general number of, of workers. So as a, as a region, we calculate that there are roughly 400,000 federal workers within the COG footprint. And that includes a number of jurisdictions over in Maryland, the District of Columbia, and then a number of jurisdictions over here on the Northern Virginia side. But overall, as a region, about 17% of, of the workers are workers related to the federal government. So that is a significant number compared to most places around the country. The Washington region has by far the highest concentrations of not only workers, but also at-place jobs within the country. The next closest metropolitan area to the Washington region would be the New York City metropolitan area. Excellent. So there have been a number of different groups that have been doing their own work related to this reduction in, in the federal workforce. The Urban Institute has done analysis that if there's a 75% reduction in the federal workers, that could lead to an unemployment rate of 9.6, which would certainly be a lot higher than what we experienced during the pandemic. Also would like to give a kind of a shout out to the Weldon Cooper Center. They have done a lot of research in the last month or two. There's so much information on their website. It's important to kind of highlight some of the resources that Jill and the Northern Virginia jurisdictions are able to, to count on. So Weldon Cooper Center is a very good partner in terms of studying what is going on. Next slide. So this is something that we have been pulling together within the last week or so. There is a data set related to median earnings. And we do have this data broken out for the entire COG region, including a number of Northern Virginia jurisdictions within the data set. Here, I only highlighted, again, Fairfax County, City of Fairfax and Falls Church with an idea of when you look at these different class of workers, there is something about federal government workers. They are very well-paid positions, not only here in Northern Virginia, but elsewhere in other jurisdictions within our region. Prince George's County has a fairly high median earnings when it comes to federal government jobs. So overall, you know, for the region, for the MSA, it comes out to about $129,000, $130,000 a year in terms of earnings. Again, I'm going to say it again, that given kind of the relative small size of jurisdictions like Fairfax and Falls Church, there is a, a higher margin of error associated with these jurisdictions. So just would caution, caution you that when you look at your number, you know, that there is kind of a margin of error. Whereas when you look at the Fairfax County number, because it's such a large sample, those numbers seem to be relatively okay to, to look at. So one thing that I did, just as a, on the back of an envelope, was looking at if we did experience a 40,000 reduction or 10% of the reduction of federal workers in our region, what, what type of financial impact? And if you were just to multiply that number by the median earnings of 130,000, it, it comes out to about $5.2 billion. And that's not just for one year. That's, that's continuing on when, when people no longer have these jobs. And I think that is something that is significant in terms of what type of impact will that have with spending on local economies? You know, how are people, how are they going to make ends meet with these types of losses of jobs? So again, you know, this is taking some very conservative numbers of a 10% reduction, which is resulting in, in about a $5.2 billion loss of earnings for, for one year. So that's, this is it for me in terms of my presentation. I would also just say that this is the 2023 five-year estimates. This data was released in December of 2024. So we would expect in December of this year, the 2024 five-year and one-year estimates will be released. I would dare say that we will probably see similar numbers compared to what we see here in the 2023 data. It's probably not going to be until 2025, 2026 is when we start seeing some of these reductions in federal workers showing up in the census data.
Yeah, I think we'll pause for questions and maybe save them for after NVRC is done as well, if that's okay with the council? Okay. Bob and Jill?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn that on, sorry. And thank you for having Bob Lozaro and I here tonight. We're going to go down to the Northern Virginia level for the data that we're about to see. Whereas as you saw from Greg's information, that was the DC metro as well as the COG region. So to begin, let's see. The first thing I wanted to bring to your attention was just the studies that were being done out there that are going to be coming your way that will really shed a light on really what's going to potentially be happening in the region. It'll have various scenarios in these studies that are going to be done. First, there's the Virginia House Emergency Committee that, that you probably have heard of that's doing the impacts on the federal workforce and funding reductions. And UVA, Weldon Cooper Center, has been tasked by the state to do much of the analysis, pretty much all of it. But they are gathering information from NVRC and other jurisdictions and entities throughout the state for anything readily available for input into their analysis. And that will be completed by December 15th in time for the General Assembly. And that's a statewide analysis, and they will be going down to the regional level, but not to the county or city level. And then for Northern Virginia, we have, I should say, the Northern Virginia Economic Development Alliance has done a contract with an entity that's performing an economic analysis for our region. And that's currently underway and will be completed in May of, May 15th. And that data will show different scenarios, the economic impacts. And as much as possible, we, we've asked them to go down to the county and city levels for data that is available to that extent. Those will be coming and will definitely be the most valuable thing out there that we'll have as a resource for, for planning purposes. And then indicators that we have right now, some of the best ones we have are the job posting indicators. Northern Virginia's companies have been removing jobs from the job boards, and that's because of the diminished hopes and fewer contracts that they now envision having with their organizations. So our Northern Virginia Economic Development Authorities during COVID built this Fairfax EDA job board. And that, back in February of 2025, had only 45,000 jobs as compared to a year ago, when it had over 90,000. So that right there shows you one of the great impacts that this reduction has already had on our region. And the scarcity of the jobs that, that will be out there and the competition that's going to be out there. And one thing to note is many of these jobs, the majority, are not, not of the same skill level. They're much lower skill levels. So that's very concerning because it's only about 30% of the jobs that are advertised have the same skill levels of those who are laid off. So that will mean that we could potentially lose a lot of our population moving out if they can't get remote work or hybrid somewhere else. Next slide. So the fiscal issues of heightened concern that are important to keep in mind as you're assessing things would be the safety net programs, which we have done analysis on. We'll show you the Northern Virginia data for those programs. The restaurant industry is a big concern for any business areas that are surrounded by the federal government agencies. The hotel industry is quite concerned about losing their business from conferences and lower occupancy rates, which then will affect this, the sales tax revenues for the state. And we've also got the office vacancies to be of concern with the GSA leases ending potentially. And for the GSA leases, many of the jurisdictions have economic development staff that are tracking all those leases in case that, in case these leases do end. The data will be available, and that data is being shared with the consultant that's doing the economic study. And from a tax revenue perspective, it's, we have to be concerned about the meals tax with the GSA leases potentially being gone for some of these entities. That would mean the property values would decrease with the vacancy rates and less demand for the office market. Sales tax declines from the hotels and consumer spending, as well as the consumer spending going down front because of the inflation from tariffs. And also the personal income tax losses. So, so if you think of that $5.2 billion for the entire MSA that Greg was just presenting, that's not only spending losses that you'll have in the region, but also the, the, the losses for the personal income from the revenue standpoint, which is quite concerning. Next, we'll get into the data now. To build off of what Greg has mentioned, just a few more details on, on this issue of the various estimates you've been hearing out there. The first one, which Greg showed you, the OPM report, the Congressional Research Study. That one has 145,000 federal workers in Virginia and 2.3 million in the US. This number, this data source, OPM, is what Governor Youngkin had been quoting for the longest of time, and I believe is, has still been quoting. We're trying to get him to move away from that. That's been difficult because it really greatly underestimates how many federal workers we, we do have in the state. It underestimates because it excludes the security agencies, such as the CIA and the Geospatial Intelligence Agency. And it also excludes the Postal Service. And one other thing to note about that data source is it's the place of work. So it doesn't consider the fact that there's a huge increase in federal jobs when you consider place of residence, since most people work in DC. That, that's another reason this is quite, quite underestimating what our potential really is for impacts. The next data source is BLS. There's been a lot of that out there. You might have heard of the 3 million from the USA. That's coming from this data source, which is also place of work. This one differs from OPM mainly because it includes the postal workers. So when you include the postal workers, Virginia then has 193,000 jobs located in the state that are federal. And then lastly is the Census Bureau data, which COG was presenting. And then, lastly, is the Census Bureau data, which COG was presenting, and that one is the place of residence. And that one overestimates, but is still the best representation of how many jobs are located in our region and in the state, for the reason that it does not exclude the security agencies. And it is an overestimate, I will say, because there are some grant holders and contractors in those numbers, which are not technically federal workers, but they're included, since this is just a survey, self-reporting. So, just keep that in mind when you see those numbers, but when you see the ACS numbers that I'm about to present, that really is your best source. So, next, we have the federal contracts and grants information. Weldon Cooper has done extensive analysis, and we will be tracking that to guide you all and all our members as to what data is out there for your benefit and for your planning purposes. Analysis that they've done to date stated that for the contracts, federal contractors that Virginia has that are full-time and part-time, there's approximately four hundred forty-one thousand in our state. So, that's about seven point seven percent of the workforce in our state. And then, for the contracts and grants, we, Virginia ranked number one in the country for total funds for federal contracts. A hundred nine billion is what they showed, which is fifteen point six percent of the national contracts that are federal. So, that's a pretty extensive amount that we rely upon. So, that also shows how dependent we are on the federal workforce with that high amount. And then, for the total funds per capita, they showed that Virginia ranks number two after DC. And per capita, we have approximately twelve thousand fund, twelve thousand dollars for the funds for our population here in the state, which is well above the USA at two thousand nine ninety-nine. So, I'll now go into Northern Virginia and let you know the resources that we have so far, and we will be adding to our resources over time as we do more analysis. And upon request for additional data that you all may want, we're certainly here to support that, those efforts. So, what we have is our Northern Virginia Dashboard, where we have a federal monitoring section now, and it has a fact sheet, it has the maps, it has safety net participants, unemployment claims, and workforce data that we are continually monitoring. So, I'll go into each one of those, what we have. So, first is the full-time and part-time data for the jobs that are located in Northern Virginia. So, this would be the BLS data that does not include the security agencies. This is important to look at in addition to the ACS, because being that it's the jobs located here, this is a good source for assessing what restaurant impacts may there be and hotel impacts that are affected from the job, the job losses in the business-centric areas. So, with that in mind, Northern Virginia has approximately eighty-one thousand federal workers located in the region, physically working here. That's six percent of our total workforce. And for Virginia, that is less, at four point eight percent of the workforce, and the US is two percent. So, certainly much heavier concentrations. And as a share of the country's federal civilian jobs, I'm showing here that we have two point seven percent of the federal civilian jobs in our country, according to this data source. And you also see here Falls Church City shows has, have in two thousand sixteen. An important thing to note is the margins of error and how they derive this data at the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which actually comes from Virginia Employment Commission, because I got questions from some of you all as to the fact that you don't believe that you have any federal employment here, other than the US Post Office. So, the reason BLS would be doing, would be stating that could be for a few reasons. If they have an address for our federal employment agency, and they can't map it to the exact address, they will then use the ZIP code as the centroid, so you share ZIP codes with Fairfax County. So, certainly, potentially, some of these employees may have been associated with an agency in Fairfax unknowingly. They also will just do, purely do estimates based on historical data. So, if you used to have an agency here, they still may be just guessing that it's still here, even though, if there's a lack of data. So, just understand there is these margins of error, but when it comes to the region overall, regional data certainly is much more accurate than the smaller levels that you're seeing here with the counties and cities. And next is the resident data. So, that's much higher than the businesses located here for the federal jobs. For the residents, that's a hundred seventy-five thousand in Northern Virginia. And this data source is using the twenty twenty-three one-year estimates from the ACS, whereas what Greg was showing you was the five-year. For the one-year estimates, that is the most current data available and most timely, unlike the five-year that covers twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. To analyze Northern Virginia, we chose to do this most timely dataset, which, for that, Falls Church does not have its own data. You have to use the five-year for Falls Church alone, which is why it's combined here with Fairfax City. So, if you want your Falls Church numbers, which was approximately two thousand, I believe Greg said, that would come from the five-year. But for purposes of having the most timely data for our region, this is the best source. And as it shows, one of eight Northern Virginia residents is a federal worker, so that's a very high concentration. And of all the Northern Virginia residents, we have four percent of the share of the country's federal workforce. So, that's background on that, and then we'll go to the maps that are available on our website as a resource to show you, first, where the sheriff total civilian employments are, where the highest concentrations are. And the, it's showing that the inner jurisdictions, such as Arlington and Alexandria, where the dark red is, certainly have the highest concentrations, because they're closest to the city and closest to all the federal entities, such as the Pentagon and other places, such as that. So, when you use this resource, you can click on it, and you'll get a pop-up menu with all the different data, as shown on the left-hand side there. So, that's just one example, but certainly for every ZIP code out there, the data is available interactively. Next is the density per square mile, which is a different way of displaying this data. This is showing you how many actual employees there are per square mile in the various areas. So, in looking at it from that perspective, where the highest number of employees are, certainly, as you see, not as, not a lot of red, but where we do have the red, it's very highly concentrated and appears just to the east of Falls Church and Arlington and Alexandria. And again, that data is interactive by ZIP code on our website. So, next is the unemployment claims that we are tracking. That information has, is quite confusing, and I wanted to help clarify some of the nuances of that data, so that you can understand it, because if you have seen the data, you'll know that it's showing very few federal employees laid off to date, as you'll see here in a minute. And that is partly because that many of the federal employees have not had to apply for the unemployment benefits to date, because of, they are on administrative leave, which is paid leave, and the severance is voluntary. And if you're voluntary, you don't qualify for the unemployment benefits. So, it's those two reasons that are really keeping the numbers really low for the country overall, as well as our region. The country overall, when it was eleven thousand laid off, according to these unemployment numbers, from January to February, and then February to March for the country, it was four thousand were laid off. So, again, fifteen thousand, which is much less than what you've seen from the, from the federal numbers that have come out by agency and all. And for those reasons I just mentioned, and I will say that the weekly initial claims, the resources that I recommend you use are listed here. One confusing thing is that Department of Labor puts out their Thursday release, which is not comparable to the data that Virginia Employment Commission has been putting out. It's not comparable, because Department of Labor's data is place of work, whereas Virginia Employment Commission is the place of residence. So, I highly recommend you stick with the Virginia Employment Commission information in their resources, which come out every Friday, the day after. And so, that would lessen confusion if you only used one source. And on our website, we're using the Virginia Employment Commission's place of residence information. And so, you'll see that it will match everything that comes out every Friday when you monitor it. And next, so this is our website that we have, where it's interactive and updated weekly on the Fridays, showing right now the Virginia, Maryland, and DC numbers, which are quite low for the reasons I mentioned, the administrative leave, employees not being counted, and severance people not being counted. So, quite low to date, and not really high spikes at all when it comes to Virginia's numbers, the medium blue that you're seeing there. That's the initial claims, so the initial claims are people that have filed for the first time, their first week of employment. And next would be the continued claims. This is the one to really monitor, to know whether people are actually getting employed and re-employed, because if the numbers stay, stay high or keep climbing, you know people are struggling to find new jobs. But if it starts to stabilize or go down, then it has to be either because the unemployment initial claims are either going down or stabilizing, as well as people just against finding jobs, if it's stabilized or going down. And additional unemployment claims that I found very helpful was a March fifteenth release that Virginia Employment Commission had. It was a one-time release, but I'm hoping that they will do this more often. We will be asking the House Emergency Committee, suggesting it to them, Bob and I will be actually tomorrow, at a special meeting they are having, where we're gonna request that they start to publish this data hopefully regularly, because this was very valuable. It's unofficial data, but it's much more valuable, because it doesn't have that lag time that the other data I just showed you had. This one is people that are still waiting to be officially approved for their benefits, and they're not approved if they have not had their wages verified by their employer, the federal government. So, these are pending approval, which is much higher numbers than what was in the numbers I just showed you, and it also shows us the contractors. And knowing that Virginia only had three hundred thirty-seven contractors apply for unemployment benefits as of March fifteenth, that was much lower than one would expect from what you've heard in the news. And one other resource we have, and actually two more resources, the other one is our monthly economic tracking report, which we're in the process of making interactive and moving it from just a regional data summary to being a city and county-level summary on a monthly basis, using the Virginia Employment Commission's data, which is labor force, the employed persons, the unemployed, the unemployment rates, as well as industry sectors and the unemployment claims. That data comes out usually one-month lag time, but it is the best data available for all of these measures. So, what everybody's waiting for is really the April twenty-ninth to see, to see the March data for all of our counties. So, certainly, by April twenty-ninth, we will have the interactive dashboard up and running for, for the county and city levels, along with the region, that will have all of this information for you. And lastly, is the safety net participants. That's a concern with the federal cutbacks, and so this is just showing you how many safety net participants for the various programs we have in Northern Virginia. The Affordable Care Act has a hundred fifty-one thousand, SNAP had a hundred thirty-one thousand, the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, that had seventy-two hundred approximately, Medicaid expansion had over one hundred eleven thousand, but that's excluding Falls Church and Manassas Park, whose data had to be suppressed for that, for that information. So, that is everything I have to bring to your attention. So, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. That's a lot of data, but I think, in light of so much uncertainty, I think the best we can do is try to get our hands on as much information as possible to kind of understand what's in front of us and what may be coming ahead in that uncertainty is something I think we're trying to plan for in the budget process. So, thank you for the presentations from both COG and NVRC. We have questions and comments from council?
One quick question.
Sure. Debbie?
Thank you all for joining us again tonight. We really appreciate having this lens on the regional data, because we do tend to get very myopic, Falls Church-centric. I wonder how you all look at the early, the voluntary, voluntary retirements and early retire, or voluntary terminations and early retirements and things like the ten ninety-nines, who've been working for a lot of these contractors who can't claim unemployment benefits? Do you have a swag or a way of thinking about, is that an additional percentage or a couple percentage points? Just curious how you are thinking about that, since, you know, you read the news stories, and then this data doesn't bear out some of that.
I think it's pretty uncertain at this time as to how many, how many of these people are retirees, so I think that's a big unknown and something we won't really know until we have, say, like that March unemployment data that comes out monthly, which will give us the labor force participation rate. If that has gone down, that's a sign that maybe possibly many of them might have been retirees. Let's see, other indicators would be, would be, what can you think of, other than labor force participation?
I was just gonna jump in on, one of the data points that I was interested in that isn't here, thinking about what isn't yet here that might help answer Debbie's question, is also if you see increased enrollments on the health exchange, because a lot of retirees can actually bring their health benefits into retirement, whereas if you, you know, left voluntarily or were terminated, then you don't normally carry your health insurance after thirty-one days, so we're still in sort of that buffer period for both kind of last paychecks, vacation kind of leave payout, and then rollover of like health care. And so, how many people are either able to switch to like a spouse's healthcare if they weren't already carrying it, or, you know, are they signing up for the exchanges kind of at pooled rates if they're able to kind of continue healthcare coverage at all? So, it might be another data point, just in terms of whether you see Virginia market enrollments.
If I could just say something, that's a great question, and Mayor Hardy knows this. This is a slow-moving train wreck that's gonna go on for months, and for those people who've took early retirement, they may not file for unemployment at all, they may just drop out of the, out of the market. Those folks, I mean, you've been working, you're fired, you're hired, you're on leave, so you're not gonna see any of that until the fall, most likely, as well. You know, the State Corporation Commission now collects the Affordable Care Act enrollments for Virginia, it's no longer through HHS. And I had, I had to call them and ask them for the data specifically for Northern Virginia, because they don't, they do not have any of that online, as opposed to previously, at least during the Biden administration, that data was available. at least during the Biden administration, that data was available. But that, that is a, a great data point. I, I just would like to share with you two important ones. The GDP of Northern Virginia is three hundred and two billion dollars. It's forty-two percent of the state's GDP. So what happens here matters statewide. So for colleagues, when you go to VML or VACO, this matters no matter where people live in Virginia. The second is in 2022, all of the personal income tax liability in Virginia was generated in Northern Virginia. Over eight billion dollars was generated in personal income tax liability in our communities. And certainly Falls Church is a high-income community, would have been on a per capita basis, probably one of the leaders in, in the Commonwealth. So, uh, one of the asks tomorrow to the Special House Committee is more timely detailed data from Virginia Works. They did a great job during COVID, and I think our dashboard and other dashboards reflected the state's commitment to being very transparent. One of the other things that we've talked about, uh, and Chairman Chapman will be suggesting tomorrow is the state legislature passed legislation that was signed that allows contractors to get unemployment insurance, but it's not been funded. So that needs to be funded. We also need to think about increasing the weekly stipend from three hundred seventy-eight dollars a week. During COVID, it was, it was increased, I think about six hundred dollars a week, a considerable increase. With the Commonwealth having a four billion dollar surplus in their rainy day fund, this is the opportunity to help those who are going to be in need. Uh, so some things to think about as you talk to your legislators and, and others and colleagues, especially in VML in areas, oh, this, this is not a big deal, this is not going to hurt us, it's going to hurt everybody, a significant impact. Uh, in Falls Church specifically, there are eleven hundred and one SNAP recipients. There are forty-eight TANF recipients and eleven hundred and eight ACA enrollees. That's based upon SCC or, uh, state data related to SNAP. So this affects a lot of families regardless of, of, or where they live. So I, I would just leave it at that. And we're constantly monitoring. Jill has done a great job. We rebuilt our dashboards to reflect the best data possible. And I appreciate the suggestion. If we can find that data from the State Corporation Commission, we'll try.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Laura?
Thank you all so much for coming this evening and joining us and for your great presentations. I, I was interested in, uh, the slide fiscal issues of heightened concern and, uh, the tax revenue, specifically meals tax, because in Falls Church City, we've already started to see that slowing down. And it was interesting because later on, we're talking, uh, Mr. Shields and Ms. Bawa will be talking with us about the budget. And one of the interesting pieces of information was all of our surrounding jurisdictions either have already committed to raising the meals tax or are considering it. Um, and so I just, you know, it, it, it seems to me that that's because people are more concerned about spending their money out at restaurants, but also that the restaurant industry's got to be somewhat concerned about that. They're already going to be seeing less people coming in and now meals taxes are increasing. So you just said, I do, I think we've seen that same, that theme here, here in the city. And as far as I know, we're not considering a meals tax increase, but it's definitely something that, um, concerns us for sure. Thank you.
As a former mayor who's raised a meals tax twice, I appreciate your concern. Um, I, I would just say that, um, we're still waiting, waiting on some data. I mean, you read the newspapers, the travel from people in Canada to the US is declined sharply. And so, and you read in the newspapers about how, uh, people traveling from Europe here is declining sharply. One of the, uh, people testifying tomorrow is a Mr. Carrier from, uh, the Northern Virginia Chamber of Commerce, but he's also the CEO of BF Saul, which is a big hospitality, uh, organization. And he had conversations with Jill and their January, January, February numbers were atrocious. And Northern Virginia's numbers caused the state to be at a negative number. So it'll be interesting to see how that's playing out in terms of hospitality and other types of entertainment taxes.
Thank you. Others? Well, thank you. This was really sobering. I wish we, we were ending on a higher note, but we appreciate both the regional coordination and the data. Uh, and also just to belated, thank you to Jill. I remember for years during COVID, we were staring at the charts coming out of NVRC on like positivity rate. I actually have deja vu from sitting in these meetings, looking at really great data from NVRC and helping us kind of figure out what to do during the pandemic. So appreciate all the work you did back then and all the work that you're continuing to do now. Uh, and then also, uh, early congratulations to Bob for retirement. Um, he's announcing his retirement this summer. And so thank you for both your leadership and service to the region. I think you leave really big shoes to fill in NVRC.
Thank you, Mayor. I've enjoyed every minute of it, maybe not so much of COVID, but, um, important work. And, um, as I told you and the other members of the commission, um, my, my end date is August thirty-first, but I suspect with recruitment and everything, it may press a little longer. And if that's the case, I'm, I'm happy to stay to make sure that a successor is in place. But I want to thank the staff and you all for your support. Um, NVRC does, um, important work for our region, helping locality save money, providing services to people in need. You know, uh, our Ryan White program serves over thirty-two hundred people who have AIDS. It's not about AIDS prevention, it's about taking care of people who have what was thirty years ago, a death sentence, but we're helping keep people alive. And like you, we're worried about our federal funding for programs like this. So, um, more to come, I'm sure, in, in the days and weeks to come.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Yeah. And we're the, one of the smallest jurisdictions in the area. I think we really rely on that regional coordination. And so we appreciate both COG and NVRC in helping facilitate that for us.
And you have a great city attorney, who was the town attorney in Persville.
Okay.
That's the city we're going to hear. Persville.
Terrific. Thank you all. Have a good night.
All right. Next up is the capital improvements program. I just told Kaitlin Sobsey who's going to lead this presentation, dash out of the room. Not sure what that means. So maybe we'll take just a moment to transition.
Like, that was really depressing. I need to take a break.
Yeah, we need to revise it downward.
But important to know, I guess my, one of my takeaways as we transition is we are a little insulated this year because we have local strong revenues, but I'm pretty worried about the region as a whole, obviously. And then I think next year's budgets are really going to be tough for everybody. Like, things aren't going to get better in terms of commercial vacancy rates and everything else that's dragging down revenues and say our neighbors. Uh, and if people are going to cut back on consumer spending, I think we're going to see the impacts of that. So thinking ahead to FY twenty-seven is, makes me more nervous.
And Madam Mayor, I would add, um, and it might be very relevant to the CIP or the tariffs on, um, a lot of construction materials and both for city work and private, uh, construction. And it even will affect, uh, the cost of automobiles and pretty much everything that consumers buy. So, but for, particularly for the CIP, the effects on construction of the tariffs, if they remain in place, might be, uh, might be quite significant.
Yep. Good point, Dave. So with that, Kaitlin's back. Welcome.
Before we turn it over to Kaitlin, um, maybe just a quick overview of what we plan to do with the budget, because we, we do have an action-packed agenda, as the mayor said at the, right at the outset. Um, so we'll start with a capital improvements, uh, presentation. Then, as we did with the planning commission, we're going to do a long, a multi-year look at the use of the Affordable Housing Fund. Um, and Dana, uh, Jones will provide that presentation. And then, um, uh, Ross Littenhouse would like to join. He's, uh, is not formally on the agenda, but have about five minutes, um, to talk about the EDA's contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund and, uh, if the city council were to reimburse the EDA, how they would use those funds. And then lastly, uh, we'll have a discussion of the solid waste fee concepts. We will then review all of the budget ordinances and, um, and Kieran Bawa will walk us through those. This is a time to discuss tax rates and fees, um, uh, so that there's that council discussion before the first reading next week. Um, and so we'll jump into the CIP right now. And maybe one thing, maybe just for the council to think about as, and for staff to think about before we get to the solid waste fee discussion, which is, um, item four, um, is for the council to consider, um, one of the things I think staff is actually going to make a plea for is that we take a year to study this some more. That'll be, you know, one thing we'll ask the council for. Um, we have some practical obstacles to implementing this, um, you know, in, in the month of, you know, deliberation through the budget process. But you don't have to respond to that right now, but I wanted to sort of give you a forewarning that that was going to be, um, kind of my introductory comments for the solid waste fee concept. And if the council reacts well to that suggestion, then we might not need to go through all of the slides and sort of repeat the entire presentation from past, uh, the past fall. Um, it is updated, but it, you know, the concepts are all essentially, uh, much as was discussed back in the fall. Um, so with that introduction, um, we will now turn it over to Ms. Sobsey for a review of the capital improvements program. Uh, the cap, the CIP is where a lot of the action is in the budget. And so, uh, uh, thank you for the whole CIP team. And Kaitlin is our leader in coordinating all of the good thinking and innovation and creativity that goes into this plan.
Thanks, Mr. Shields. Um, good evening, council. I'm Kaitlin Sobsey, uh, CIP coordinator, and I'm here tonight to present to you the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one Capital Improvements Program, or CIP as it's known. Uh, the CIP is a roadmap of long-range investments in the city's key infrastructure and facilities, mapping out where we're going or what's next. Um, it's also a reflection of our vision, balancing the needs and priorities of council, the community, and our existing infrastructure. So it's an exciting opportunity for us to strategically drive the city, uh, towards meeting that vision. So we'll get started. Uh, first, sort of the big picture of what we're talking about tonight. The CIP is made up of four different funds that are shown here. Uh, the general and school fund, which, uh, the six-year budget total is fifty-one million. Um, the special transportation fund, which, uh, totals fifty-nine million. And then we have two utility funds, the sewer utility fund for thirty-five million and the stormwater fund for three million. That makes up the six-year total of a hundred and forty-eight million, um, which for reference is, uh, more modest than last year's one hundred and eighty-nine million, uh, budget. Um, just a little bit about the CIP notebooks, which should have been provided to you all. The sections one and two of the CIP notebook are included in the operating budget book in section ten. Um, but the CIP notebooks, uh, that look like this are, uh, have, they do have the more detailed project sheets and program information, and that is available to the public, um, for everyone in PDF format, um, online at the link provided here. Next, we're going to talk about priorities, um, that guided CIP development this year. City Council, two-year strategic priorities, set a clear vision for progress with five key priority areas. Uh, we tried to sort of develop a CIP that aligned with these strategic priorities. Um, for environmental sustainability, we tied in the Energy Action Plan goals to project development to integrate energy efficiency goals. Um, for transportation, this, uh, CIP proposes and delivers key investments in walkability, bike infrastructure, and safety. Um, I, I think all of our, almost all of our CIP projects enhance city spaces and infrastructure to be more business-friendly, enhancing economic development. Um, on housing front, uh, per the revised financial policy that council adopted in November of twenty twenty-four, um, staff was directed to develop a new, uh, long-range plan for affordable housing. Um, and that was done by the Housing and Human Services Team, um, to support the housing priorities of preserving and expanding housing in the city. That was presented to the Planning Commission concurrently with the CIP, um, as well as the Housing Commission. And Dana will talk about that more tonight. And then for good governance, we tried to apply a customer service mindset to all CIP development and delivery overall. Um, of course, we also use the fiscal year twenty-six budget guidance adopted by council in December of twenty twenty-four as well. Additional priorities, um, that we use, so every year at the beginning of CIP development, we start in the fall, um, and we always set out some staff priorities for the, um, CIP process ahead. And these are those priorities that we established this year. Effective and realistic project delivery is sort of a continuation of last year's effort to right resource and right-size the CIP. Um, we've been successful in starting to unclog the CIP or the backlog of CIP projects. We talked about that a lot last year. Now we're trying to look to the future and optimizing the CIP so that we avoid any future clogs as well. Um, we're heavily focused on infrastructure reinvestments this year, um, in maintaining our existing transportation infrastructure of roads and sidewalks and traffic signals, and also our public facilities, the community center, our parks, our trails, Aurora House, et cetera. Um, multimodal transportation continues to be a priority. And as I mentioned, the CIP proposes, um, uh, delivers, uh, walkability and bike, uh, and ped safety projects. Um, and again, affordable housing, as I mentioned, um, the CIP and affordable housing funds are still separate, um, but Housing and Human Services staff developed a six-year plan for the Affordable Housing Fund, um, to try and ensure equity between our capital investments and our housing investments that are coming up. Um, the Planning Commission, uh, always provides input, um, and their priorities to us as well in the fall when we visit them for CIP kickoff. And the priorities that they provided really aligned nicely with these. Um, they also want to see continued investments in infrastructure and multimodal transportation. Affordable housing is a big priority for them. Um, and they also wanted to see the execution of the energy action plans. A little bit more on CIP development this year, we made some big changes. So what's new in fiscal year twenty-six? We designed a new project sheet format, um, that includes more detailed schedule and budget data as well as project benefits. We really tried to tell the story of each project's what, when, why, and how much. What is it? Why do we need it? When is it going to happen? And how much is it? Um, we also designed new alignment checklists on each one of those project sheets so that every project would be evaluated for alignment and consistency with the comp plan chapters. Um, and then we also, uh, updated the equity and sustainability lens. That lens used to be on the back of the project sheets. We added a new checklist on the front, um, that has the same previous equity questions, um, but also added the Energy Action Plan goals, um, for the sustainability lens. So we evaluated each project on those, um, goals and objectives. Uh, projects without detailed schedule and budget data were added to the ten-year outlook. So that's a new table that we added in section two this year. The intent is that, um, those projects are identified for, um, additional planning and development that needs to be done before we can add them into our six-year plan. Um, my hope is that we'll be able to prioritize a few projects each year that we then staff can, you know, focus on and develop those projects, um, those schedules and budgets, uh, over the next year to be included in the next year's CIP plan. Um, overall, we're just trying to refine sort of the long-range forecasting process, made some other layout enhancements and general organizational improvements to try to, to try to improve readability and accessibility of the CIP, um, and just try to increase public transparency and awareness overall, again, thinking about that customer service approach. All right. Next, I'm going to get into the funding. Um, first, we'll look at fiscal year twenty-six only. While the CIP is adopted as a six-year plan, um, only year one is appropriated in the budget ordinance, and then years two through six are really adopted as a plan only. Um, so this is a look at fiscal year twenty-six. This is also why we revisit the CIP annually, um, to ensure that we have the flexibility to respond to shifting priorities or emerging needs. Um, in fiscal year twenty-six only, um, the total CIP investment is twenty-six point three million dollars. And you can see there what the project uses are on the left. Transportation's still a big one at nine million, but this year, the sewer program, uh, is actually larger at fourteen million. Um, uh, that includes the ten million dollar flow equalization basin, um, which was included in previous CIPs. It just so happens that this is the year that we have to pay for it. Um, and then on the right side there, you see the pie chart that shows the funding, uh, sources. That summarizes all the different sources in fiscal year twenty-six. The, uh, largest chunk on the right side of that chart is in gray, that is debt at eleven point four million. Again, that's predominantly made up of the ten million dollar, uh, flow equalization basin. The second largest, uh, funding source in fiscal year twenty-six is grants in orange. Um, and I can't see, I forget, I think that's six point, no, nine? Whatever it says, thank you. Um, that's our second largest funding source. We also have funding sources on the bottom there in blue and yellow. We have capital reserves and pay-as-you-go, our local sources. We have a small sliver- sources. We have a small sliver of green for $1.3 million as to be funded. And then we also added a color this year. The purple represents available fund balance, use of available fund balance in the stormwater and sewer programs that we will be using to deliver projects in the CIP this year. The next slide is going to be, thank you, Cindy, maybe a little bit, yeah, there you go. The next slide is the same overview of funding for the total six-year CIP. So on the left, you have the same project uses. Transportation is the largest program there at $59 million. Then in public facilities and schools and the sewer program, you have $36 and $35 million respectively. This really supports and aligns with our focus that I mentioned on infrastructure reinvestment across transportation, facilities, and public utilities. That's where we're really leveraging pay-as-you-go local funds and capital reserves to reinvest back into public infrastructure. In transportation, of course, we also have a large amount of grant funding. The transportation program is typically between 60% and 70% grant-funded. The funding sources on the right side there still have a big chunk of debt in gray. A lot of projects are included, a lot of big projects included in that. I want to be clear, there's no general fund debt until fiscal year 28. The debt for the sewer utility fund is separate because that's an enterprise fund and not, the debt is not issued against the general fund. But included in that total there for the six years is the $30 million property yard for fiscal year 28 and 29. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Also, $5 million for their roof replacement at Fire Station 6, and then $22.6 million of that debt is for the sewer fund over the six years, starting in fiscal year 26. Still, oh wait, go back one, I'm sorry. Our goal always is, when we look at this pie chart, because the second-largest source is the grant funds, and our goal always is to, for staff, is to keep increasing that orange sliver of the pie and, you know, as we continue to identify grant opportunities that we can use to offset some of these project costs. Overall, this year's $148 million forecast is more modest than last year's while we're trying to balance ongoing workload and financial resources. The next slide, I'm ready for that one now. Status of grant funds. I want to talk about this for a little bit. This is a topic there's been a lot of questions on. Understandably, I don't have a lot of news to report right now. I think this is one of those things, no news is good news, maybe. We are monitoring it very closely. We've had a lot of very responsive and positive discussion and engagement with our federal agency, you know, contacts that we work with. At this time, we have no loss of funding or holds on our federal grants or projects that has been indicated. But I do want to talk about what sort of is exposed when we talk about federal grant funds. So in the fiscal year 26 to 31 CIP, so in the proposed six-year CIP, there is $46 million in grant funds programmed. Only $12.4 million of that is federal. On the right side, I have shown what projects are included in that $12.4 million. So those include bridge inspections, our annual bridge inspections program, and our pedestrian bridges at Howard E. Herman and Cavalier Trail Park. Those are both funded by RSTP, which stands for Regional Surface Transportation Program. We have a pending grant application right now for Broad and Washington paving through the State of Good Repair Program. We have our RSTP parent fund, which is for all ped, bike, bridge, and traffic calming projects. We transfer those funds to various projects. The South Washington Bus Stop Expansion Project is included in that. That's funded through the Smart Scale Program, and then Bike Share Phase Two is also funded by RSTP.
Can we pause on this slide? Because in light of the discussion we just had. So can I just interject with a question to make sure I'm understanding? So for the existing stuff on the bottom right, that's stuff that's underway?
Yes.
Clearly, Hawks are almost done. Broad Street Multimodal is in right-of-way acquisition. Bourbon Trail Crossing's nearly done. Go under construction soon.
Correct.
The Bridge and Park Avenue Great Streets are in design right-of-way. Hopefully, we'll get started. I'm hearing you say, we haven't lost any federal money, but should something happen? Like, what is the exposure for the projects that have not yet started but, like, committed enough?
I didn't break, so 24 million is everything that is unexpended at this time. So regardless of if they're in construction or not, if they were to stop all federal payments right now, the exposure would be 24 million. All of those projects that you mentioned, many of them are in construction. All of them are in progress, and all of them are under agreement. There also, all of that 24 million is administered to us by VDOT. I'm still receiving reimbursements on federal grants from VDOT. I have had no indication from VDOT that we're stopping any grant reimbursements, that we're stopping projects, that really that there's any, like, impact to the grant funds. Will there be impacts to project costs? Yes, probably. But right now, as far as grants, in fact, in the last two weeks, we received almost $2 million in reimbursements from VDOT. So like that, I just want to, this is to communicate that this is what's included in our exposure. Right now, I'm not receiving any indication that we are at risk of having projects stopped or grants on hold.
Got it. Yeah, that's good news. And so for the top part, the future stuff that's not yet started, that $12 million in federal money is in those?
Correct. Right. So those are either, so one of them is a pending application, which I mentioned. I actually am very optimistic about receiving that grant, the Broad and Washington paving through VDOT. We have a few pending applications that were like for prior years, so they're not really included in this total. They were included in that, the $52 million that was previously communicated to council. We had a couple, like, I think, pending HUD requests or, you know, general fund requests. But what we have in CIP is the 24 million existing. That's all through VDOT that we're still receiving reimbursements on actively now. And then we have the $12 million for the six-year CIP. And again, I've asked VDOT about if any of those programs specifically are implicated, or if there's any news, if there was any response from VDOT to, yeah, any of the policy changes or the memos that have come out, and nothing so far.
And I assume all of these are based on reimbursement? So we expend money first, and then we wait for reimbursement?
That's right.
So there is some risk in that model?
Yeah. We are submitting reimbursements with frequency right now.
Mayor, if I could just add on the federal piece to what Ms. Sobsey said. The U.S. Department of Transportation put out a guidance memo, and they specifically said if you are under contract, and that's also what we've heard from several of the EPA and HUD staff, then that's not at risk. It's the stuff that's not under contract that could be reviewed. And then the specific focus was on EV chargers and bike. So for the future ones, bike and ped may be something that gets looked at and we'll have to monitor, but as indicated right now, we've heard no messages. I think also they're looking at the larger dollar amounts, and we are not, but it could impact Virginia. So as Caitlin said, closely monitoring.
Before you go on, Caitlin, I think we have other questions.
And that $33.6 million state or regional funding for these grants. Of that, do you have a sense what is initially coming from the federal government? I know they're, it's not all state dollars, right? They're getting some federal grants to then distribute at a state level?
We consider those state dollars. Sometimes VDOT will take, will use state grants, and they have a complicated system administratively where sometimes they take state grants and they deem them as federally eligible so that they can move around federal funds if they want to. But under our agreement that we have executed with VDOT, those are state funds. So under our audits, those are state funds. Yeah, for all intents and purposes, those are state funds. And then a lot of that, honestly, $33.6 million is regional MVTA money, which is not impacted by the federal outlook at all. It could be impacted by revenues, you know, regionally in Northern Virginia, but we don't, it's too soon to say what those impacts would be.
And Caitlin, the $12.4 federal that you're showing here, a lot of that is paths through the state, but it's not state funding?
Yes. Yeah, it's all pass-through the state pretty much. Yeah. Yeah.
Other questions?
So just to follow up and making sure I'm understanding. So Ms. Mester, so the existing, those projects, I know we talked about the Sherrill Avenue Bridge in a work session recently. So those are all under contract? We're all in agreement? So we should be, according to what you just said, Ms. Mester, we should be fine with the funding?
Based on the letter that we got at the end of January.
Right.
Continuing to monitor any changes that come out of DC.
Okay. I'm not putting you on the spot by any means.
So Ms. Downs, just to clarify, those are not all under contract for construction? So those are, we have--
Just under--
They're under agreement.
Just under--
They have agreements, but, you know, several of those are not under construction.
Right. So because I don't know, I'm assuming, because I know we just had that conversation about Sherrill Bridge. So is that something that we would be cautious with, those that are not under contract yet?
Well, I do want to clarify, the U.S. Department of Transportation guidance was whether you were under agreement, grant agreement, or not, not whether you were under construction contract. So from that standpoint, at the federal level, if we're under contract, under agreement, they consider it safe. There's a separate stage of development, whether it would design right-of-way or construction.
Right. You know, and I'm just looking at, I keep bringing up the Sherrill Avenue Bridge, but that's a pretty big project. And so that's what sort of concerns me a little bit that, you know, and as Mayor Hardy said, if we pay that up and then we don't get the reimbursement or what have you, that would be very devastating. So--
Sherrill Avenue is completely administered by VDOT, and so I don't believe that we, in fact, like, they're doing design through construction. We don't even have any reimbursements to submit to for Sherrill Avenue Bridge replacement, because even though it's technically allocated to the City of Falls Church, VDOT is doing all the contracts. They're responsible for all the--
That's right. I remember that now. Okay. So you think that would help because they're really overseeing that whole project? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think, yeah, I think it's better to have them under contract and going into construction, which many of them are on their way very soon or currently in construction. I think that to us is better because the Department of Transportation, I mean, these are unusual circumstances these days, but like always, historically, they want these projects to be delivered. Like, these, you know, execute goals of the Department of Transportation as well. So for them to not fund a project that's already in construction would be very, very unusual. So, and, but, so those would be less at risk, in my opinion, I guess. But all of them are under agreement with the City of Falls Church and VDOT or the funding agency. Yeah.
Just had two quick ones that are somewhat related. So I had the same question. I guess, as Ms. Scott, in that $33.6 state or regional, so there is a portion of that, even though we deem it state, that is federal money that the state is dispersing? Or no, it's all coming from Virginia or like--
I think I might have convoluted that with my answer. VDOT moves around federal money in ways that we don't really have any say over. So sometimes they fund state grants with federal funds. We don't even sometimes know that that's what's happening. That's sort of their backend thing. Those, that $33.6 million is mostly made up of regional MVTA funds, and then the rest of it is truly state grants. The federal $12.4 million, we get almost all of that through the state, through VDOT, but those are true federal grant programs.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to figure out what could be, what could potentially be an issue within the $33.6. So that's helpful. And then I think as we think about the future, that list that is the $12.4 million federal, it would be helpful to know if we weren't to get that federal money, like, of that list, which of those things do we think we would need to absorb locally or grant funding that we would have to seek out, given, like, safety considerations and whatever it would be. So, you know, there might be a sub-list that's, hey, this is what we're getting grant-funded on, but here's what we definitely would need to absorb locally if we didn't get those funds.
Think a lot of the things on the list we just wouldn't do, right? You know, but there are a few bridge inspections--
I was just going to say, I hope we've been doing--
Let's sort of do, yeah.
--bridge inspections, but, you know, but some of the paving, we'd have to eventually get to, you know, using those as examples, but some of the rest of the ped bridges are going to eventually need to be replaced. The South Washington Bus Stop is a kind of transformational project we could choose not to do, for example. So, you know, and that's where a lot of the money is. So.
A general source of angst I have is the reimbursement model. And so as we start the projects, I want us to be very, like, conscious about how much we could be left holding the bag on if the reimbursement doesn't come through. We're like, hey, we're about to start a $15 million project. It's all grant money. We think it's been fine to get reimbursed, but if not, like, that's a really big thing we'll have to make up because we'll also have to pay our contractors, right?
And especially with, like, the contingencies, what they are and the costs, what they are. I think it's a time to really think about, you know, what do we need to absorb at the costs they're at, given the impacts on the local budget, if we're left absorbing those increased costs that are unavoidable at this point?
Yeah. So I think, I kind of agree with Andy. We may not do a lot of them, but for the ones that we do, I think we want to stare at those numbers long and hard and say, if we need to pick up the pieces, like, do we have enough in reserves to take care of it? Okay. Thank you for the interjection.
Sure. The next slide, we're still talking about funding. I think we're talking about capital reserves. Yep. The six-year total for drawdown of capital reserves is $9.9 million. That is significantly less than last year's six-year total, which I think was $18 million over the 16 years. In fiscal year 26, that total is $2.4 million, which is also half of what we planned in last year's budget. Staff tried to prepare a more conservative allocation of capital reserves this year, and basically more evenly spread out the use of capital reserves over the six years, rather than having really large chunks be drawn down in year one. So you see that here, that we tried to sort of evenly spread out the use, and also this responds to our priority of effective and realistic project delivery as well, trying to more conservatively allocate staff resources as well, trying to make sure that we don't overbudget, or we don't budget for more than we can deliver in the six years. On the next slide, to be funded or unfunded, I like to call this to be funded, because these are future opportunities for funding. The six-year total for that is $7.5 million. These are staff recommendations. I heard some public comments and some questions about, like, why is staff not recommending these for funding? These are staff recommendations, but they're recommendations that are based on competing priorities across the whole CIP, which is a lot of priorities. They're also based on our financial outlook, as well as our resource levels. We don't have staff resources to deliver as many projects as we had included for fiscal year 26. There are also really good candidates for end-of-year budget surplus to be funded through that, and they're not great candidates for grant funds. Something that I've been, we've been trying to look at the last couple of years is to be a little bit more discerning about where we apply for grant funds and what we use grant funds for. You know, historically, for example, the last line there, the traffic signal infrastructure program, that's something new. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. But historically, we have used grant funds for traffic signal and intersection projects. It's sometimes taken us five years to do one intersection. So, and that's due to the added, like, complexity and review timelines and oversight that comes along with grant-funded project administration. But that feels like a not acceptable amount of time to replace a mastarm and do some ADA upgrades. So what we proposed is to locally fund the traffic signal infrastructure investments through this sort of program, as opposed to funding it with grants in order to ideally advance those projects faster. On the next slide, now we're going to look at some program overview. So the first one is transportation. I'll go through these pretty quickly. In transportation, some highlighted projects, I already talked about the paving along Broad and Washington that we have that pending grant for. Again, I feel pretty good about getting that grant this year, and that will help sort of offset some of our paving costs that we pay out of local. I mentioned the traffic signals and, oh, bike routes. We've funded two priority bike routes from the Bike Master Plan in this CIP. The first one will be the East-West Connection, starting in fiscal year 26, and then the second one will be the West Street Route, starting in fiscal year 28. We also have the South Washington Bus Stop Expansion Project, which I mentioned. That's actually started in this fiscal year, but will continue through the next two fiscal years. In the Traffic Signal Infrastructure Investment Program I mentioned, now I got lost here, sorry, you guys. Oh, some project deferrals. So we deferred the North Washington Multimodal Project to fiscal year 28. That's-- That's the $22 million MVTA-funded multimodal project to sort of smooth out some of the project delivery and workload, staff resources.
Is that the project that's going to fix the Gresham Light permanently? And so now we're saying the permanent fix is not till FY '28?
The Gresham Light was included. I believe there is a temporary fix that's in the works right now.
So the Gresham Light is included in the North Washington Project. We're delaying funding the project until FY '28.
So does that mean the temporary fix can be done sooner?
So we just got briefed on this today, and we had been working on a temporary fix. And between VDOT and Arlington together, the temporary fix will not work. So we believe kind of the only path is the North Washington Street Project.
So they have to wait till FY '28 for that fix? And it's been three years already that they can't turn left out of their neighborhood?
That's, that is the recommended approach. If the council wanted to fund this with city funds only, we could try to do it on our own, but it's going to be several million dollars. And so it would, it would make more sense to do it as part of the whole corridor.
I guess I would be interested in what the options are for a temporary fix. Like not fund North Washington with our own money, you know, three years ahead of schedule. But what is, are there options for a temporary fix that we could do on our own?
So it, it's to do the entire, all of the signals, to get them all synced up together between West Westmoreland, the fire station, and Gresham. A full intersection redo at Gresham. It's many millions of dollars.
That's the $22 million.
That's the, that would be the interim fix.
The 22 and a half million is from the Arlington line up to Columbia Undergrounding. It's a full.
Because of the proximity of the three intersections with Westmoreland, the fire station, and Gresham, the Arlington folks have weighed in and say, you've got to do it all. You can't just do something at the Gresham intersection, which is what I think our team was pursuing, is an interim solution. So you can't, because they're all kind of right there and you can't kind of do one without the other, both Arlington and VDOT folks, the VDOT folks have weighed in that because of it being Route 29, it requires kind of their full review processes. And the Arlington County folks who own the fire station intersection, as well as the Westmoreland intersection, say, you know, all three of them have to be done together. And so that was the feedback that we got, we got this morning.
Literally.
And so.
And it's from an engineering and public safety reason. It's not just funding. It's the complexity and the connectivity.
You know, there's logic behind kind of what Arlington has, has told us.
So I'm hearing you say that the only temporary fix is also very expensive. That's not really a good temporary option.
That's correct.
So I'm hearing that the 22.5 million NBT money is available, but we're pushing it out because of execution resources. So has staff looked at what other, what other projects could we swap instead so that we could do that one earlier?
I wasn't aware that the temporary fix was several million dollars until just now. So I would say that maybe that's something that we look at. Yeah.
So when we discussed kind of the sequencing of kind of the projects in the capital plan, and when you think, and you look at kind of the, not looking at every project as equal, the, the challenge with North Washington is it looks very similar to a number of other kind of major kind of street kind of redos in the city. So when you think of the Broad Street multimodal projects, and that impacts 25 to 30 property owners, you have the Park Avenue Great Streets Project, which we're trying to work on, which is 30-ish properties that we're dealing with. We've got the, the Greening of Lincoln Project, which is 40 or more properties. And again, and then, so then you think about those and all of the public engagement and all of the kind of, it isn't even just having a project manager to work on it. We, we just talked through our, you know, the organizational capacity to take on another project of similar kind of scope and complexity was the big driver of why we've pushed that out to FY '28. We want to be realistic about how many of these we can really actually work on at a time organizationally. And so, you know, I mean, we can take the feedback that we really want to kind of figure out how to pull it in, I think to Caitlin's point, but, but it isn't just swapping kind of that with like an intersection improvement. Like, it's a lot more complicated. And so that's, that's the logic why we've presented what we're proposing with that.
And we feel like we've escalated all we can in Arlington to really just fix that one local issue and not make it a bigger several million dollar temporary fix?
Yes.
I, I guess, Madam Mayor, if I might.
All right, Dave, I can't see your hand raised until I didn't know to call on you. Please go ahead.
No, no, no problem at all. Yeah, I think I want to follow up and see if we can't. First of all, I'd like to analyze this in more detail than we're able to get to tonight. And then I'd like to determine whether policy-level outreach with, with either VDOT or Arlington County might, might be useful here. So just following up on your comments and I think others, the, the strong desire to try to get this responded to.
Great. I think that's probably the collective will of council to try to look for a temporary option if possible, because I think the Gresham neighbors have been very patient. And it's been three years now, I think. And if we're going to tell them we're not going to get to it till FY '28, that will be a very disappointing message to deliver.
I think I would also be interested in, like, a very brief briefing in terms of these projects in particular. Like, obviously, Greening of Lincoln, it's a go. We have to do it. We have ARPA funding in it, like, all, all sorts of things. Can you on, but even thinking about Park Avenue Great Streets versus like North Washington, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, look, you're, you're saying do one instead of another, but hearing North Washington that far out, knowing that there's no interim solution, it may be worth thinking about, or looking at, does, does that actually make sense in terms of order?
Can we put a pin in this conversation and have more time to talk about, are we really sure there are no more interim solutions, like including escalating it to VDOT and Arlington if needed? And then if there really aren't, should we look at moving other projects?
Then how do we, how do we weigh safety? And, and maybe you guys already have, and I'm just not familiar with it, and that goes back to having a brief briefing. But, you know, if it's a true safety concern on North Washington versus Park Street, Park Avenue is a really, it's a great economic development and the undergrounding, it's the beautification, all those things. But maybe it doesn't have as much of a safety impact. And how do we weigh that in making a decision on what we can or can't do? I'd be interested in hearing that, your expert opinions on that, too.
Okay. Anything else on this slide? I just caught that when you said move to FY '20. I'm like, oh, that means Gresham implications.
I think the last thing I just want to say about this is that, of course, in the operating budget this year, totally separate from CIP, but very much alongside transportation, we have additional $700,000 in the increase in the paving budget for fiscal year '26 for roadway maintenance. That can also be used towards bike lanes, crossings, sidewalks, traffic signals and streetlights, et cetera. So that helps out our transportation program. Next slide. In public facilities and schools, some of the highlights I want to talk about is, one new project that we've added is the Mary Ellen Henderson Roof Replacement. And we've programmed that in fiscal year '28. In facility reinvestment, some of you will remember, we always have a line item in the facilities program for general government facility reinvestment. And we always put like $250,000 in that sort of program area every year. This year, we designed a, developed a new approach, and we're trying to instead develop discrete facility projects. Instead of that general government facility reinvestment program, we think that will help with project delivery, but also communicating those project updates and in our quarterly reports and all of that. The one that will start in fiscal year '26 is the City Hall Uninterruptible Power Source, right? UPS? I think that's what it means. And telecom room HVAC upgrades. We also have Oak Street Elementary continuing in this program. We also have the Property Yard still included in the facilities program for $30 million. We did, earlier this year in January, have the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel that was conducted for the overall Gordon Road Triangle and what we want to do with that area. That includes the future potential replacement of the Property Yard. And so we discussed that a lot in January. The full results of that technical assistance, or the report that they will provide, is due in the next month. So we did change a little bit in this year's CIP. It was $30 million in fiscal year '28. This year, we put, we did $3 million for design in fiscal year '28, and we pushed out $27 million into fiscal year '29. We do anticipate that depending on the results of that ULI TAP report, that that may change what the Property Yard looks like. And I think in the project sheet for the Property Yard, we even said a, a more detailed developed plan would be presented in the fiscal year '27 CIP, once we're able to sort of digest and consider all of the recommendations from the TAP.
Can I ask you a quick question on the UPS?
Yeah.
Just in the conversations we've been having with Dominion about, does the UPS, is that from the door in and then Dominion's responsible for the kind of door to the street when you're talking about uninterrupted power?
So the, the UPS is designed to be your bridge between when the power goes out to when the generator for the building kicks in. So it provides kind of uninterrupted power for your major IT systems?
Our server room and our dispatch.
That's internal to City Hall.
Correct.
And it's not Dominion-related. It's not anything that they could fund.
It's a piece of equipment we own. Yes.
Connectivity is their responsibility. And this, this is basically when it hits the door, that's what I was trying to say. Just want to confirm that. Okay, thanks.
And the larger Dominion redundancy for City Hall is tied to the Park Avenue Great Street, where they're going to use our conduits. That's the outside.
Okay. Next slide is going to be our public utilities, this fun sewer and stormwater programs. Some highlights in this program area, we have the sewer capacity purchase, where we have purchased additional sewer capacity from Fairfax County that's being finalized now. I think that purchase price was $8.8 million. That was previously appropriated in, in prior CIPs. We also have the flow equalization basin, which I mentioned, for $10 million this year. We also have changes made to the nutrient credit purchase project. This was introduced last year for $2.2 million of debt financing in fiscal year '28. This year, actually in fiscal year '25, we applied for a, a state grant through DEQ. It's called the SLAF Grant. It's Stormwater Local Assistance Fund. We applied for 600, it's a 50-50 matching program. So we applied for $640,000 towards nutrient, the purchase of nutrient credits. We were awarded that grant in fiscal year '25, so that's $640, that half of, will be paid for by the state through a grant. And our plan that we presented this year and the proposed CIP is that we will apply for that grant every year from now until fiscal year '28, so that we will offset the local cost of the nutrient credit purchase by 50%. We also added a new stormwater project at Roberts Park. The next program is Public Safety, IT, and Parks. The highlight in Parks this year is our Park Master Plan implementation. We'll be doing two parks this year, Cavalier Trail Park and Crosman Park. Other changes, we have an increase in Fire Station 6 capital reinvestments. You'll see that in the Public Safety Program. In addition to increasing Arlington, our inter-jurisdictional contract with Arlington, we also have some increase in capital improvements at the fire station as well. Next, next slide. Thank you. This, I tried to capture sort of some active CIP. None of this is included in the fiscal, in the proposed six-year CIP that we're talking about tonight, but I thought this was interesting to sort of capture our active CIP investments. The table on the right talks about the 24 million that I mentioned of transportation that we are actively delivering or spending down. Technically, that's 22 million, I guess, now, because like I said, we received 2 million in the last two weeks. We also have $20 million worth of stormwater projects that we are actively working. $12 million in the sewer program, $4 million for parks and recreation. That includes the Fellows property. $8 million for facilities and schools. That includes the Community Center HVAC project. $600,000 for IT and $2 million for public safety. That is over $70 million in active projects that the CIP team is currently managing. Of course, we do the quarterly updates to council for the CIP. In the last update that we did in February, we reported 38 active projects. I want to mention that sometimes that isn't a complete comprehensive list. We also have things like the missing links in NTC programs and smart cities that aren't included in that, that count, that project count of 38. So a lot of work going into the CIP right now. Last but not least slide, maybe, is the fiscal year '25 highlights and completed projects. I don't think this is a comprehensive list. The, a full list of completed projects is in the CIP notebook on page 1-2. These are completed projects so far in fiscal year '25 or anticipated to be complete before the end of the fiscal year. Some pictures that I included, the highly celebrated Beato's sidewalk, which was just finished up on the top there. Also, that on the bottom is our urban forestry crew, doing some plantings at one of the parklets that we did this year. And then also the synthetic turf installation at Meridian High School. I think that's the last slide. Maybe there's one more? Oh, that's the end. So for any public questions or comments, you can email the email address provided there. And then also, like I mentioned, the CIP full document is provided at the website. And I am ready for questions.
Great. Thank you for letting us interject with questions along the way, but I'm sure we still have more. Who wants to start? Laura?
I just have a quick one. This is actually on the additional slide section. So I don't know if we're allowed to talk about those, but just a super quick question. On that, so I'm looking at, I guess it's slide 21, Nolan Street Sidewalk. Can you explain to me why some things are CIP, like, so that, why would that not be missing link? Or is that missing link? It's just listed on?
It was originally included in last year's CIP individually, individual from the Missing Links program because the cost was so much higher.
Okay. So that's why I wanted to ask. So there's a certain, missing link is for a certain sort of price?
We don't have a, I don't think we have a specific threshold, but.
So I think we look at anything over $150,000 would be a CIP project.
Okay, that's great. That's all I have.
That's the right answer.
While we're on that one, though, if I could add on, because I noted the Nolan Sidewalk is on there, but not till out years. But North Virginia is a sidewalk that's been raised with us over at least eight years, because neither side of North Virginia has, has a sidewalk. So unlike Nolan, which is just a missing link around the Midvale section, that one, we've gotten a lot of complaints for, especially because of parking from the library, Cherry Hill, off of Park Avenue. That needs to be on that 10-year plan somewhere, because that's a pretty big investment. It's the entire length of North Virginia and has no sidewalk on either side. Compared to a lot of streets that I know are on missing links, has a sidewalk on one side of the street already. We're just trying to complete a little portion. So I would encourage us to add North Virginia on there.
Take a look.
Yeah, and that's a big cut-through street for people to get to Great Falls. And then one other question I had, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I love my CIP notebook at home. On that same chart, and this is just probably because I'm new, but the open space acquisition for Wreckin' Parks. What, what is that exactly?
Open space acquisition is a project that's included every year in the Parks Program as sort of a placeholder for opportunities that come up for the city to acquire properties that we could use for green spaces. We typically have always included that as a, as a placeholder in case there was like a grant opportunity that we could say, hey, this is in our adopted CIP or in our, in our adopted plan.
Right.
But usually, when those opportunities come up, the council will, can, you know, mobilize to, to purchase those prop, I mean, that's how.
Sort of like Fellows Park? Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just, I just wasn't sure of that.
Yeah. And to both of your questions, like, I want to talk about, more about the 10-year outlook, because, so this is intended, so like, I mentioned, we want to get away from including project proposals and project sheets in the six-year CIP that really don't have reliable data for the project scope, the schedule, and the budget. So what I, what we did this year was we took those projects that were kind of missing that information and that more detailed project development and put them in this list here. You absolutely, the council and the community, anyone can say, we think these other things should be included in the 10-year outlook for consideration. You can also say, we think these should be prioritized. You could say you want Nolan Sidewalk to be prioritized. That's sort of the purpose of this table, was to have that discussion and have that input on the prioritization, because we can't do project development for every single one of these 27 projects or whatever they are in the next year, let alone in the next five years, maybe. So I wanted to get a better sense of prioritization and also, and also be transparent that we don't have, you know, schedules for these projects. We don't have detailed cost estimates. We don't have detailed cost estimates. We want to also include them, we want to keep them in the adopted CIP so that, again, we can use it for grant opportunities if they come up and if we have the opportunity to do project development or a study or something like that.
No, that makes sense. That's great. Thank you.
Mary Beth?
Thank you for that presentation. My question is about the Roberts Park stormwater. Is that one of our big six projects or is that a new project?
That's a new project.
It's new.
All of the big six are either completed now or in, or in progress. Many of them going into construction this year or being advertised this year. So that's part of that $20 million of active stormwater that we're delivering. So that's why the stormwater program for the six-year CIP is, looks kind of small compared to what we've been doing because we're still working on the big six.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, I knew we were coming to the end of those big six. So is Roberts Park related to an upgrade in the park? Or, I just haven't heard of that in my memory, which doesn't mean we haven't talked about it.
So I believe the team identified, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I believe the team identified Roberts Park as a water quality project opportunity. So as we were looking at some of the out-year stormwater projects, again, some of them are potentially pretty big numbers and, and I don't think we've had a full discussion on what the scope needs to be. And, and so this one, I think the team had, had a better, it was a little more modest in ambition and something I think the team had, had a better handle on our ability to execute. And so we prioritize this one first. You know, there are others, you know, in the 10-year outlook that we were just looking at a minute ago that our team is going to work on, right? And hopefully fold in kind of a little clearer plans for kind of in future CIPs.
It would also supply nutrient credits. So, the Roberts Park project.
And is it tied to any, a recreation and parks plan to renovate anything?
So in the same year, in fiscal year 28, Parks and Rec had, in their, in their park master plan implementation, they had proposed Roberts Park for the same year for fiscal year 28. So we actually moved the park master plan implementation to, to be funded in that year while we work through funding in future years. But also we want to make sure that the two align. Like we don't want to be constructing a new playground in the same year that we're doing a major stormwater infrastructure.
Thank you.
Do you have others? Erin?
Maybe just a few quick ones. I might be doing a disservice to Wreckin' Parks in my liaison role to them, but I did have a question about the $495,000 in terms of the two playgrounds, I guess, at Crossman and at Cavalier Trail. And I think it's just, you know, thinking both in terms of tax relief and building capital reserves, knowing kind of the economic realities and economic hardships that people are facing right now and also the increasing costs that we're likely going to encounter. So, you know, when I'm near Crossman Park, I can recognize like why we would want to reinvest in that playground. But at the same time, I go, well, you know, a block away, you have Banneker Playground. And you, and so you say like, is that $300,000 that we could potentially give, you know, find that another half penny? Or is that $300,000 that we should have in capital reserves right now going into kind of the uncertainty and sort of the budget forecasts that we have? And then I guess I'm also, maybe a question for later on, is we had been talking about sort of investment income and what a fiscal year 25 surplus might look like. And I guess I would be interested in whether those investment income numbers look as good now as they did last week even in terms of, you know, what the market is doing and losses that we may have, you know, gains we thought we had and losses that we now have. And so for me, things like the park playgrounds and even Cavalier Trail, knowing like that the sewer, the whole tank is coming up similar to the parklet next to Quinn, like, does it make more sense to put that on an out year or to say, if we have a surplus fund, maybe that's where it goes? If we have an unexpected surplus a year from now, maybe that's where it goes. But right now, understanding kind of the economics that residents are facing, that the city's facing, does it make sense to, for that to be the capital reserve expenditure?
So I think the broader like prioritization and tough decision-making is, I think, left to you all, right? I think the one, the one comment related to, to what you were talking about, so the, so I went out to Cavalier Trail to see where the, this part, this playground is at the opposite end of that park that's not anywhere close to.
The end of Westmoreland and the bridge.
Yeah, so it, so I don't think it would be impacted or, or kind of in the way or conflicting with the flow equalization basin project. So for what that's worth.
I, I would second the Crossman Park because, I'm sorry, that's our neighbor and, and that playground equipment is old. But I think, you know, to Ms. Flynn's point, there is an enormous playground one block away that's three times the size. So I just don't know, you know, I know that playground equipment is old, but I, I'm not sure if, and I, you know, I don't know what, and I'm a little bit uninformed because I'm not sure exactly what the plans are. I don't have my CIP notebook in front of me. So, but I will say that that, that huge Arlington Park is just literally a block away and it's humongous and lots of kids use it, so.
And Arlington taxpayers pay for it.
Justine and then Dave.
Thank you for putting all this together. I'm curious about maintenance costs. Is that something that we're tracking with some of these projects? And especially maintenance costs, like we know that you, you had the 10-year outlook, but I don't know if it includes things like, I don't even know. Like we, we do have in, in here that we're going to have to redo the turf at some point for some of these fields. But do we have a holistic picture of all of the different maintenance needs that are going to be coming up in the next 10 decade or so?
So in the CIP budget, we, we try to do new and one-time projects only and not provide for maintenance projects or costs in the CIP. We have tracked maintenance costs related to CIP projects, especially like installing like new facilities through the CIP. It needs some work. And so it was not included in the project sheets this year. It's an improvement that I would like to include in the project sheets in the future. Again, trying to stick with like the most reliable information that we have. I want to make sure that that's what we're providing. And so that's sort of a future improvement that I anticipate working on.
If I could add a plus one to that because I feel like I've given that comment for eight years now, especially because we took on so much capital in the early parts of, you know, the 2015 to the 2020s. And I remember, you know, when we built the new library, suddenly we had extra operating costs and we had to fund extra hours and have extra staff. Not only is it just, I think, an improvement to the project sheet, but I want to make sure we factor into operating budget discussions. Like, hey, we're building new stuff. How much is it going to cost to maintain this? What are the utility costs of a big new building? I don't know how that connection happens today. I think a good forcing mechanism is ensure there's a slot on the sheet so that that happens. But I am really concerned that we continue to miss those and then we end up having to find operating dollars to maintain the new stuff we built.
Because it, it was included in the original project sheet format that we designed this year and it was removed because we just don't have the systems necessary to, to do that for every single project. So something we, we are going to continue to work towards.
I think the challenge of kind of connecting those kinds of operating costs in the operating budget that we appropriate once a year to the six-year capital improvements program where we're making kind of long-term investments is a little tricky, right? So one of the things that we've been working on more recently and not in the big CIP scale but is, is some of the beautification efforts, you know, and trying to kind of connect the dots on if you put flower baskets in, you know, one time and that's like a really great thing and we get celebrate it, but then you have to fund that every year, right? And so connecting the dots into the right place in the operating budget so that we can do that quickly and easily without a lot of, you know, worry about where the money is going to come from. And so that's kind of on a small scale and then I think kind of on some of these other capital projects that is, you know, there are added costs that come with some of these things and, but yet tying that to, you know, the operating budget three years from now is, is, it's a little tricky.
Yeah, I think that, that's sort of the problem because sometimes some of these maintenance costs don't really necessarily fit in the CIP and they don't fit in the yearly budget. And so I don't, even just like some sort of like spreadsheet, which is like, here are all the things, you know, I don't know how that would work. But, you know, I even think about just getting a heads up, like, you know, you have to repay or like repaint bike lanes every five years. And so that should be something that, oh, five years from now, we know we're going to have to do and so we need to make sure that we have money allocated for that once every five year or 10 year or whatever it is, project. So I don't know the right way to do it, whether it belongs in the CIP elsewhere, but it would be nice to have that somehow, at least something that we can be aware of as, as these things come up. Because in some ways, like the turf replacement is kind of baked in, like we know that that's on a certain schedule. And so it'd be nice to have even as silly as flower baskets are, I don't know, or somehow seeing things that we do have to maintain on a, a certain schedule. Other things, just one quick, could you talk a little bit about the bike plans? So I see capital, dollars allocated in, in two different years for the two different bike plans. What's the schedule there? What's, what are the expectations there?
So for the first bike route, east-west connection, we did have a, some design money allocated in fiscal year 25, I believe. Fiscal year 26, funding would be a continuation of that design budget because it was not a complete budget for design. So can, so design would be in fiscal year 26 with construction, being in fiscal year 27. The following year, fiscal year 28, we would start design on the west street connection or, or route. And then construction of that would be in fiscal year 29.
Okay, so the, the first amount of funding is for design specifically?
Right, the smaller amount in the first fiscal year would be design and then the next, the following year would be a larger amount for construction.
In terms of like contingency costs and stuff like, I mean, I guess all these numbers are estimates. And so if we suddenly have like ballooning costs, then we kind of have to get back, go back to the drawing board and figure out, you know, whether or not we can even do some of these projects.
Yeah.
Okay, because I mean, I guess Green and Lincoln is one example where there were suddenly ballooning costs and then have to re-figure out that project. And so that's sort of maybe an early example of, of, of things to come as, you know, there are a bunch of unknowns on the economic horizon. Do we have, I mean, so what, what would we do in that situation? Would, I guess one option would be to borrow money from future years and put that to more current years or what, what would be, how would we handle those sorts of things?
Tell me more about borrowing money from futures. What are you, what are you thinking?
Um, as in like.
Trying to understand that.
And, oh, actually, I'm, I'm not even sure how that would work, but I feel like there have been times where we've taken money out of some other project and put it into something else or taken, moved money from fiscal year 28.
So with the bike projects specifically, we want to try and fund it with local funds and that's what we've done here. And that's part of the reason why we've set it up the way that we have. It's, it's staff resources, honestly, and the staff that we have available to, to manage the projects right now, but it's also the funding. So it's the, since we're trying to fund it with 100% local funds and the first project we are funding with NVTA 30%, we sort of consider those local funds, even though they are technically a grant source, really they're, they're given to the locality in monthly or quarterly disbursements or whatever. So that's part of the reason why we've set it up the way that we have is because putting federal grant dollars on a bike infrastructure project seems like it would, and in, in staff's opinion and recommendation, it would unnecessarily slow the project down and increase the cost more, even more significantly and really complicate a project that should be relatively easy to deliver. So we want to stick with local funds on that. So we don't want to borrow any money from other grant-funded projects and we don't want to issue debt ideally.
All right.
So I think that maybe, you know, I would say like where, what we would do is we would take a hard look at the scope of the project and figure out how to adjust the scope to live within the budget that we have.
Okay.
That's how I would.
Probably handle.
Handle that unknown in the future.
Okay. Great, thank you. That's all for me.
Other CIP questions? Dave, oh, you're next.
Yes, thanks very much. Two quick questions. First of all, with regard to the, the sewer tank, the 10 million you call for that for debt funding. What I'd like is a total taxpayer payout for that over the length of the, the debt. What is it, 20-year, 30-year debt? What, what is the proposal for that?
Yeah, that would be typically 20-year debt and it would be in the utility funds would be ratepayer supported. But we can provide that full, I mean, I don't think we've run the amortization for that, but that, that can certainly be done.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like that because the ratepayers are also our taxpayers and voters. So.
That's right.
So it's coming out of the same pocket, whether it's in a fund or whether it's under the general budget. And then with regard to the geothermal work at the community center, is that the same contractor that did the school geothermal?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't think so, but I don't, I don't know for sure.
I can get back to you without answer.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
Yeah, if you go almost last, you get most of your questions asked before they get to you. So I only have one left on this list, which is our inter-jurisdictional agreement with Arlington for that, the fire. I mean, that's a, you know, big CIP project here and I see the listings of that. Like how much was that anticipated, I guess? I know we had some increases in cost for the labor, but were the capital expenses pretty well-known or is this part of the current negotiation?
We have a regular meeting with Arlington County where we try to sit down with them and plan out what future capital expenditures would be. And so the, the big one is a new roof on the station and that is in the out-years. So that's the process working properly.
Great.
What we don't want to have is surprises come up sooner than that.
And I guess that was the point I was trying to get to because of the jump in labor, I want to make sure we're in, we know as much as we can for those out-years. And then I just wanted to.
There's also not much impact in fiscal year 26 for that, so it doesn't, we don't really see it until fiscal year 27, the increase in capital. Yeah.
Yeah. And then I just want to make a comment in general on the CIP, on this format. I think you guys worked really hard on this new kind of layout and I really like it because I want to back my questions. I could cross-reference and say, what was the deal with the synthetic turf? I thought we just did the high school one this year. Why aren't, you know, why are we doing that again in two more sets of years? And I could go to the little description and find the other two and why they're going to be there. And it was easy for me to follow and I liked the references to the comp plan and to the, the lens. And I really like having the Community Energy Action Plan on there. Of course, I'm going to be the one supporting doing solar roof through our, probably through our year-end surplus, both Aurora House and City, I think 105 was listed on.
Community Center.
To be funded on the city building rooftop solar. So just preceding my vote for that. And just to thank you again for this, I think this is for me very helpful and a great way to cross-reference the program and my questions back to uneasily digestible. So thank you for doing that.
Perfect, good.
I just had one other one. For this traffic signal infrastructure upgrades, I guess on 25, it looks like 1.25 million of a 1.64 million dollar need is going unfunded in fiscal year 2026. And then there's more information on page 76 that shows, you know, the NVTA grants kind of coming in, starting fiscal year 2028 through the end of the six-year cycle. And I guess I'm just wondering, you know, for fiscal year 26 and 27, there seems to be a large, you know, unfunded 2.5 million dollars and what that means when the project description is about like existing infrastructure needs, masked arms and ADA compliance. So.
So ideally, I am hoping to fund at least some, if not all of that 1.2 million in fiscal, for fiscal year 26 through a budget amendment or a surplus. That would be great. I also am anticipating, so part of that, what that program is doing is actually deferring and de-allocating some existing grant projects that we have through VDOT and moving all the local funding into this program. So I am hoping to also backfill some of that $2 million with funds that we take from other projects that are also traffic signal projects. We're just sort of all, reprogramming it all into this one project.
And you're, when you're talking about hoping to put funds into it, are you talking about like fiscal year 25 surplus funds that you would put into cap reserves and then do a budget amendment to be able to put them into fiscal year 26 for this need? I guess I just want to know like what the actual needs are and where the money we need is so that. and where the money we need is so that we can have realistic conversations about like, do we take a $300,000 playground project off the books? Because priority wise, it is beneath ADA compliance and like functioning masked arms.
So what, you know, my guidance council will be is to look within the CIP and pull, cancel projects in the CIP and full fund, hear what you're thinking about not funding something, then put that something else rather than going deeper into reserves. However, if the council's guidance at the end of the day is, no, we want to go deeper into reserves, then you know, that chart that's in the budget presentation that shows how much capital reserves are there, you know, would be helpful to the council then.
And I think that might just get back to my earlier question on like, when we're talking about this fiscal year 25 surplus, like how much should we be thinking about that? Like what your unfund, what your surplus usage list is going to look like? And how much that, of that surplus usage list? Maybe things that are unfunded in this CIP versus things that weren't funded in fiscal year 2025 that are still in a parking lot, if that makes sense? So. Yeah.
Okay, I think that's just me left. So, thank you. I love the CIP, so bear with me. So I'm going to start with some general comments first and then I have some project specific ones. So I want to plus one the comments about the process improvement done on the CIP. I really do like the, the new project pages. The one thing I would add is again, factor in maintenance costs somehow for the big stuff that, as you think that, it's a good forcing mechanism. And along those lines, one thing that was done when I was a new council member is we painted all those light poles. And I know Andy, you have it on the list of things that we need to get to, but that feels like another recurring expense. Like maybe every 10 years, we need to paint those light poles again because we don't want them rusting and falling over. So kind of like the turf field. So there might be a bunch of other items like that that are recurring. To Justine's point, it's just good to, if they are big enough expense, to put them on the CIP because then it forces us to get to them and fund them and plan for them rather than oops, we need to get to that and then having to find resources to do it. So would encourage us to do that. For all these costs, I guess it's probably too early, but are we factoring tariffs into the contingency? And if so, what does that do to our CIP? And when do we have that conversation?
No, they're not factored in as of right now. I mean, our fiscal year 26 cost estimates include, really all of our cost estimates include significant amount of contingency and escalation for out years. And so we're still using sort of our standard contingency and escalation. I haven't heard any exact numbers of increases on existing projects yet. So it would be hard to, to capture what that would look like.
That's again, something we need to keep in mind and maybe we'll have better clarity once we know if they're here to stay and what the amount will be. But just again, our contingency amounts will have to go up. One thing I noted throughout the CIP, obviously, transportation being, you know, like a third of it, a third of our total CIP. And schools and facilities used to be a big part of it. And I remember that we didn't actually have a bunch of school projects on there other than a few, you know, minor things like the MEH roof and whatnot. And so I also skimmed the school CIP because I'm a nerd. And I noted that actually they had a slide in there, I think is useful to include in our presentations, that we are good on school capacity till 2045. Like we've got 20 years of growth planned, which I thought was really impressive given how much we've spent on school capital and given how much effort that took from both council and school board. I think that's something to celebrate that we've taken care of school capacity for 20 years. That is a good news story that does not come through because we spent so much effort for the first however many years of this solving. So that's somewhere I think needs to be included in the discussion. Glad to see the extra 700,000 in paving. We should communicate what new things we're doing with that. So I know that we have like a two-year paving schedule on the website with like, here's what can be paved in 2025, here's what's coming. But if we are putting this extra injection in there, it would be great to communicate out, here are the extra streets that we're getting to because we were putting more money towards it.
So we'll have more to share with you all on the 21st about kind of the operating budget, transportation, infrastructure money? You know, the breakdown of what that is. I don't know that we're going to present a road by road kind of, here, here's, you know, what we're doing in every fiscal year, but we'll try and provide some color of how that money is going to help us, you know, to include things like replacing the streetlights.
Like if this was the schedule and then here's, here's the new stuff that we're going to be able to take care of because we're putting more money towards street maintenance. And again, reflecting on the feedback we got in the community survey, I think paving we heard loud and clear, traffic calming, pedestrian safety is kind of the other big one. And I know we're making big investments there. But NTC is a program that I think has been important for the community to feel agency and bottoms-up process. Questions I've asked last time that I would like more information on is, what is the average wait time for somebody who submitted a petition in NTC? And then what is our throughput per year? Like for the $200,000 we put in there, do we get one project done a year? Is it one big one and one light solution? Is it, is the average wait time two years? Because I think that would help us decide, is $200,000 enough? And then how long is the queue? About three or four years ago during COVID, I remember we actually had this big clearing of the queue effort. I don't know, I don't have good clarity into how long that queue is, but I get the sense that people are waiting a long time. And there's more demand than supply.
So we'll have more to share on NTC also on the 21st, I think as a preview. I would say, you know, the constraint isn't necessarily dollars in the capital plan, right? And several of you have been personally engaged on some of these projects. The, the community engagement process of this is arduous, right? And that's the, in my view, that is the limiter on our ability to deliver those projects rather than how much money's in the CIP.
So that's a great segue because NTC is a great bottoms-up process. We want people to say, hey, you have to get 50% of your neighborhood before we tackle the projects that there's really good neighborhood support. I think as we hear about safety issues, we need to think about some top-down changes that we're just going to say, this does not need full neighborhood buy-in and we're just going to do them. That's probably less resource intensive. Now that takes some, like, it's probably going to be unpopular in some places, but I think finding that balance between the two is important. And so that's something I want us to give some thought on is how do we resource that? The rapid response team, which we funded two years ago? I don't know if they're still up and going, but that, my hope was some of those like top-down, hey, we're just going to do it quickly. So that's more like early thinking on, one, is NTC appropriately funded given the throughput and the wait times people are experiencing and the demand that we have in the queue? And then second, how do we think about funding some top-down things to address some of the pedestrian issues that we're hearing about? So that we don't have to wait for a bottoms-up process to take care of it.
And if Mayor, could I, if I could just interject, because I know the city manager heard this comment and Andy, you may have been there also at the town hall, but I thought it was interesting that both the former chair of the CACT and the current chair of the CACT both made a comment about the $200,000 for the NTC program and really their frustrations with the NTC program and that same hope maybe for a little bit more top-down directive based on the crash, you know, data and the reports about what we could do and address more quickly and not necessarily sort of having more drawn-out neighborhood input. So it is striking that balance, but I think, you know, they shared and it's, it's interesting for me when you hear from the CACT itself, who you would think would be more proponents of the program saying like, no, we actually need to maybe approach this in a different way, that it, it might be appropriate to think about that 200,000.
Yeah, and to be clear, I'm not saying we throw at NTC. I think people want to have some bottoms-up way of saying, hey, I'm going to advocate for this on my street. But I think when we do a better job of looking at crash data and where there's actually accidents, like using that to say, no, tops down, we're just going to fix this street and make it safer. And we need to fund that approach as well.
And then, and when you've got a very limited set of people to work on all of this stuff, we, you know, some of this has got to pick, right? And so I think that's, it's a good conversation for us to have. And I think we're, we're eager to do that.
Great.
And can I also add, and we have picked, the single biggest thing in your budget is transportation improvements. Nine million bucks in FY '26, 59 million over six years. It is the biggest thing that we're doing as an organization. So it'd be good, you know, that's top-down. That is the program and none of them are easy. And so to be agile and sort of jump on other things, none of them are, are easy. Every street people have very strong opinions about and half the people don't want it done and half do. And so that's why the CIP is so important. It is transformative and that's the program. It's, and it's quite kind of overwhelming in many respects. I mean, we're tearing up a lot of streets throughout the city.
Well, I think they, and from my perspective, the important thing of having a top-down approach is using, of course, taking in community feedback, but using the expertise of the safety engineers and traffic engineers who have so much more information than the average person does. And we've talked about the ballers before in Columbia and those went up and people are like, well, that makes you go down, it makes you drive slower. And we're like, they're like, oh, that's the point, right? They're not as attractive and people don't want to have them maybe outside their house, but they're performing the function that the engineers are intending them to do. Same with the rotor, the traffic circle and other things that we've talked about. And at some point in time, we need to rely on our expert staff and engineers to keep us safe. And I, I like that from the top-down approach, that we're doing this for the safety of the community. So, thank you.
Another kind of general question. So the 30 million in the out years for the property yard, given that we haven't really, we need to schedule a debrief probably in the May-June timeframe from the Gordon Road tap to figure out. Because like, having sat in on some of the, the recommendations, I have some angst about whether we're willing to commit to that given it largely is predicated on having private investment help pay for some of it. And given the state of the world right now, I'm just not sure that we'll feel good about things in FY '28. But I think the request I have for staff is, we can keep it there as a placeholder, but we need to have that kind of discussion with probably all of council and planning commission and what the recommendations were out of that tap before we can feel good about that being a commitment. So that's my recommendation on that one. If I can get to some more specific things. So in the 10-year outlooks at page 2-7, Caitlin, are you looking for input from us on how to prioritize these things?
I think that would be helpful if the council has strong priorities, you know, in this list that they would provide staff. I think that would be helpful, yeah, to provide to us.
Not knowing what some of these things are, like $30 million for street grid realignment seems like a big, like, I don't know what that is. It's good to have a street grid, but I can't say whether it should be done or not. I guess my suggestion to staff is if we could take maybe, given council priorities, the community survey, how does this stuff align with those? That you all can take a cut at it because we don't have enough information on what each of these are. My only add is again, the North Virginia sidewalk needs to be on this list.
Mayor, and I have an add. I think, don't we need to add the new turf baseball field on the 10-year?
I think that's already, the baseball field is already in the
To replace the turf in 10 years?
Kind of like all the other turf fields, we have a 10-year cycle.
Yeah, it would be included in our, in our, in that program in Parks and Rec. But yeah, that would need to be included as well.
But yeah, it'll be
In our 10-year, yeah, right. Yeah, that's a good point. I didn't quite think through that, Mayor. All of these, I will say, all of these projects were derived from project sheets that were included in previous year CIP. So all of them had project sheets in the fiscal year 25 CIP that had at least a description of what those projects were. So I can, I can work towards providing more details. This is definitely a process that I anticipated some refining and
I just don't think I could personally like help you prioritize this any better than saying, I don't know what this is. So maybe ask staff to help with that. That would be great. So going on my specific questions, page 5-6 prompted a question I had about, because it talked about increased energy usage at the library. In general, as part of the operating budget discussion, I'd like to keep an eye on how our utility costs are and whether there's opportunity, again, with the Go Eat Plan, whether it's solar or retrofitting older buildings, but that feels like a really great way to lower our utility costs. But that just prompted a, a question for when we get to the operating budget.
And that, that came up in the ESC a couple, two different ESC meetings asking about why we keep it lit 24/7. So we can get to that.
Yeah, plus one on that one. Page 6-2 on the Park Master Plan. I am interested in the conversation we just had about, you know, do Berman and Crosman really need to get done, especially if we are worried? So I would like to hear from kind of Wreckin' Parks as well as Advisory Board on how they feel about that. One kind of small request and suggestion I've made over the years, I love that we are replacing the signs and making each one pretty unique, but it would be great to tie them together with some sort of unifying like badge that says, this is the City of Falls Church Wreckin' Parks. Because right now, all our signs look different. And I think that's intentional to give every park its own like unique flavor, which is great, but people can't tell they all are part of the Wreckin' Park system. So that's just a small suggestion there.
Well, when you look at Crosman and Cavalier, I mean Crosman and the other one, the Arlington Park specifically, as you're going through the trail or cutting through there, it'd be nice to, when, when and if it does get done, say like, this is Falls Church City. And then let Arlington, because they have a lot of sign Banneker, Banneker does a great job branding and you are here on the trail and, you know, they, they invested significantly in that, so I agree with you.
Yeah, like it's great to have individual character, but let's make sure they, we take credit that they're part of the City of Falls Church park system. Page 7-5, so this is the Broad and Washington paving that we might get federal money for, Caitlin, you said? My question is, why is this not done as part of the Insight and Founders Row two projects? Because these are the exact streets that were touched as part of those. Did we just not negotiate for them to redo this?
No.
No, 7-5, the paving on Broad and Washington?
It's paving only, so these segments are, so the State of Good Repair Fund, they, VDOT provides their assessment of our pavement conditions. They do it every year. And then based on those conditions, they release to us what primary extensions they, of ours, which only include in the city Broad, Washington and Hillwood that are eligible to receive funds through this program. The segments are, it's over almost 1.5 million dollars of paving, but they're like, they're like little segments. It's not all one long, so I think the Washington segments, there's one section where it's both northbound and, or eastbound and westbound along Washington or along Broad, but it doesn't go all the way up to the, to the West Falls Church development. It like, it starts right at that or right after that intersection and it goes down to, I think, West Street?
Yeah, it looks like it was from west to probably Birch or so.
Yeah, so it starts just, just east of Haycock Road. And then, so it's like certain, it, it, the segments don't all connect. Sometimes it's both sides of the road, sometimes it's only one side of the road. And the same thing on Washington as well. That's why in the past, we've sometimes passed on these funds. But in this case, we felt like we could really use these for, towards our paving program.
So my question to Wyatt, I guess, is are these stretches planned to be repaved as part of those private development projects? In which case, we don't need to spend the federal money on these stretches?
Our engineers went out to both Founders Row and Broad and Washington here. And the, these segments did not, they look like they intersect with those developments, but they didn't. So like our transportation engineers inspected that to make sure that we're not paving something twice. Right?
Okay. Okay. But now we're talking about this exact stretch of North Washington in FY '28 with that 22.5 million dollars we just talked about. So would we, do we really want to repave this exact project? And then two years later, tear it all up for the $22 million project? My request to staff is think about the timing of this and can these federal dollars be used for other streets that really need repaving? No?
They're only eligible for primary extensions.
Does that help us solve Gresham earlier?
No, this is, this is a real kind of rudimentary paving grant and it's only for our big roads. And so maybe eight years ago, we paid all, paved all of Broad and all of 29 and all of Hillwood using this program. And we want to do that again.
Okay. Page 7-7, this, I, questions also on signal prioritization and the mask arm stuff. How does that sync up with the smart cities work? And if this isn't getting funded till FY '28 and '29, according to page 7-7, does that mean that we can't really fully realize all the smart city stuff?
That's the NVTA TSP grant.
I have to get back to you and answer. I know it does connect with smart cities technology.
I guess the smart city technology is not putting in the TSP. So we're getting the foundational equipment in that can then capitalize on the TSP. And we've had a VTTI coordinating with our staff on the TSP part and the NVTA. So it doesn't duplicate it, but it will capitalize or leverage it.
But in all, so, okay, so it doesn't touch smart cities, but with all the BRT discussions we've had and whether our stretch of seven can be kind of like a nice interim BRT because we could put in this TSP stuff that talks to our buses?
Yep.
This will not happen till FY '28 and '29?
And that will work with the BRT work that we're doing with NVTC in terms of the timing for that. And we do have some TSP for intersections right now that are already TSP. So the NVTC, the smart city, the NVTA, and then also with Womata, because all of the buses or Womata are being coordinated to capitalize. It's sequenced so far to work.
Okay. Okay. Page 7-11, that's improvements on South Washington, is this also the, this is one of the federal grants, ones that might be at risk?
Yes, this is the smart scale funded project, the South Washington Bus Stop Expansion.
I know that Fairfax County is trying to get a study for Route 29, and so the request for staff is actually just connect with the Providence District and FC DOT on their project, because they actually recently just had a pedestrian death along their stretch of Route 29, which I think spurred along, increasing the prioritization of that, so obviously we connect on 29, so.
Yeah, this project was based on a study that the, the Route 29 Neighborhood Group and, and Virginia Tech performed.
Yeah, theirs is going to go from Graham all the way to Hollywood, maybe? If I remember correctly.
Okay.
So, it'll pick up for, up to Graham, I think.
Up to Graham, yeah. This project addresses South Washington on both sides, the Falls Church City side and the Fairfax County side, from Maple in Washington, thank you, to Graham, to the city limits essentially.
Okay. We already talked about Gresham plenty, my last one, page 7-17, there's a whole page just for project development, shouldn't that just be part of every project? Like, why do we have it split out as a whole CIP page?
That's always been a project sheet that we've included, we allocate $100,000 a year for basically staff time and it could also pay for consultant fees as well to develop projects that do not have any grant funding on them yet. So, if there was, if we wanted to do a study or we want to spend time developing an application for a big project and we're spending a lot of hours on it, that's what we, that's what we use this for.
Okay.
So, it can kind of be like seed money to help develop the scope for future projects?
Like those 10-year projects we were just talking about?
Right.
This would be like helping...
Right.
I was just looking at Sally and thinking about something else that she and I had talked about, and I know you all have talked about as well, which is when applying for some of these grants, including legal costs in the grant, so I don't know if that's something that gets worked in on these, we haven't historically done a whole lot of that, but I know many of the grants are structured so that you can incorporate legal costs and whether that's working with transportation lawyers or whatever the case may be for some of these projects, so just want to put that out there too.
That's a good suggestion. And then I also want plus one, the rooftop solar, so if we have the ability to fund that from year-end money from FY '25, that would be a nice, small tangible thing we can do and help with some utility costs at Aurora House. Any final thoughts on CIP? Thank you for the very, the discussion.
Thank you all.
I don't know if we're on schedule, but we're at 10 o'clock and we're two and a half hours in, do you all want to take a break before we get to the housing fund? A restroom break? Okay.
Cheez-It break.
Or, well, no, we just kept eating Cheez-It, so it's fine. Does 9:58, we'll come back at 10:05? What break?
All right, so everybody knows I've unmuted and we're getting ready for FCC TV to come live off of break.
10:06. Thank you Dana for being patient with us.
Is that true? Can I just make a quick introduction? Dana Jones is going to give her multi-year affordable housing plan, and maybe just a few thoughts on it. Multi-year planning is helpful right now because we have sort of the big, high, you know, the high-profile things like the NHP Home Ownership Program, the Acquisition Strike Fund for Virginia Village, both funded with grant dollars in their multi-year projects. In addition, we have the CCAU program for housing accessibility for people at 40% AMI, that's a multi-year program, and we're setting aside funds now, $350,000 for future affordable needs. So, those are some of the reasons we're doing multi-year planning and the affordable housing policy that we're working on also calls for all these things. The one thing I do want to note, just as a technical matter, the charter lays out that we do the CIP and it lays out the rules for how we do the CIP. There is no similar provision for multi-year planning for affordable housing in the city charter. One thing to remember is that when the council transfers money into the Affordable Housing Fund, it stays there forever, but you have to re-appropriate it every year. Unlike the CIP, if you appropriate something, that project has three years to get done, so you're going to see things that maybe you think you already appropriated money for, for like the Acquisition Strike Fund, in fact, you need to re-appropriate money for that every year. That's just one technical difference to keep in mind as we go through the multi-year planning. Ms., Jenny, did you want to make any kind of introductory comments?
No, I don't, you did, that was great.
Dana, take it away, thank you.
Good evening, as I mentioned, I'll be brief. So, as Wyatt mentioned, we're really excited that we're doing long-range planning for the Affordable Housing Fund now, and so we're saying we're building balances to solve future problems, so you can go to the next slide. And as per the council revised financial policies, the long-range planning will be for six years, it's concurrent with the CIP, it has big support from the Housing Commission, the Affordable Living Policy Group, this is something that we've been wanting to do for a while, and it's even an Affordable Living Policy Goal 16. Go to the next chart, okay? And so, this kind of is a chart that talks about our funding programs and sources, so kind of, and you'll see some of the things that Wyatt talked about. So, the first one, our first program that is going to be, that's in this plan, is the City Committed Affordable Units, the CCAU program that Wyatt talked about, and I'm not going to go into details about the programs, because I'm going to go talk about each one after we get through this chart. So, the funding source on that one is the city transfer, which is annual, that's part of that $500,000 that council is doing annually, so it's $150,000 for FY '26, so I have the 26 total and the six-year total. And so, at the end of the six years, that will be, I couldn't really think this through because I can't see it. $900,000, yes, for the six-year total. And so, for the Affordable Home Ownership Program and the Acquisition Strike Fund, which is Virginia Village, both of those were Amazon Reach Grants. Thank you, Cindy. So, the Affordable Home Ownership Program was $1,750, and so, and we are using those funds now to make home purchases, and so, we will have to appropriate those every year as Wyatt said, so that's why it's on the six-year total. Same for the Acquisition Strike Fund, we have Amazon Funds, which are $3,805, which will have to be appropriated each year, and then we also have the HUD grant, the Don Byer Grant for $850,000, that's also on the six-year. And then, our next project is the Housing Nonprofit Grants, and the two sources are CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, which is $230,000, and that'll be a $440,000 six-year total, and then Home, which is Housing Opportunities Made Equal, will have $31,000 annually, and that will be $186,000 total. And then we have a Housing Needs Assessment, which is going to help us determine needs for homelessness and community needs in general, something we've been wanting for a long time. So, we're planning on using $100,000 in FY '26, and that, that will only be a one-time cost, so we have that over on the six-year total. And then for the Housing Preservation Fund, that's the $350,000 is the city transfer, that's part of that $500,000 that we talked about, and at the six-year total, after putting that $500,000 in every year, we'll have $2,100,000. And then we have our cash and lieu balance, that cash and lieu is coming from West End Development, it's $228,412, and you can see the six-year total on that, $1,477. And you can go to the next slide. And before we talk about each one of the projects, I just wanted to give you just some background, we use HUD AMIs to talk about all of our programs, and I think most of you are familiar with this, but we, they range from 30% to 50% AMI, which is considered low income, that would be $46,000 to $77,000. Moderate income is $51,000 to $80,000 AMI, and that's $78,000 to $123,000. And then we have workforce income, and that is 81%, AMI to 120% AMI, and that's $124,000 to $185,000. And those are all four-person households, so they just look at all the incomes in Northern Virginia, Maryland and DC, take the area median income, and that's where we get that from. And so, just keep that in mind as we're going through all of those, those are what all, so I don't have to say which one is as we go through them. So, going, the first project is the City Committed Affordable Unit Program, that one is that serves the very low income that I talked about, and the way it works is we subsidize a portion of their rent, very similar to the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Properties are located throughout the city, two years ago, we had two units, now we have 15, so in two years, we've expanded the program, and we have over 300 households on the waitlist, so that's 50% of our waitlist, we have 700 people on the waitlist, and 50% of them are at those lower incomes waiting for units. You can go to the next slide. The next program is the Affordable Home Ownership Program, this reduces purchases of homes by as much as $150,000 for households that are at 50%, which is that moderate up to workforce, which is 120%. Our nonprofit partner is the NHP Foundation, which does the purchasing, and they do improvements up to $20,000. So far, we've had 10 households in the city, so 10 homes in the city have been purchased by city residents, and we have 10 more by 2027. The goal is to have 20 homes purchased by city residents, so that is amazing, because we haven't had homeownership opportunities in a really long time.
We need, we need to know more about that one, like, on a regular basis, that's a big deal.
We just sold one last week, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you. So the next one is the Acquisition Strike Fund. And with that program, you're, I think you're familiar with that one. That is Virginia Village. The current balance is 4.6 million. It's funded by a variety of grants, Amazon Reach. And these were in that chart. We had ARPA funds that we have expended, HUD funds, which include the Don Byer Funds, the EDA, and capital reserves. All of those are part of this program. It's a revolving fund. And what we're doing is purchasing, consolidating, and eventually develop new construction. And it will include committed housing. And right now, we have five quadruplexes, which are owned by the EDA. And one is owned by Wesley Housing. And it is our intention as the city to purchase that unit. So it will be six that will be owned by the city. You can go to the next slide. Told you I was going to be brief. So housing nonprofits in the city. There are three housing nonprofits in the city. And so it was the Housing Commission's intention to fund those three housing nonprofits. And we get our HUD grant funds through Fairfax County. We are a sub-recipient. They get their CDBG and HOME funds through HUD. And then we are a sub-recipient to them. We allow them to expand their territory and get more funding. We have a public process to award the funds. The outcomes include providing rent to formerly unhoused individuals and providing rent resettlement assistance to immigrant households, providing capital rehabilitation to keep rents affordable to seniors and disabled residents. And those nonprofits are Homestretch, Welcoming Falls Church, and the Falls Church Housing Corporation. You can go to the next slide. This, and so the next program on the, our slide, I mean, in the program, the Affordable Housing Fund is the Housing Preservation Fund. So Housing Preservation is in the plan as increasing by 3% every year. It's appropriated funds and cash and lieu contributions. And the goal is to preserve existing units and promote new development. And future projects will include preserving committed affordable units, negotiating extension of covenants for ADUs like we did at the Reed Building, and including funds into the Acquisition Strike Fund. That program's in transition. But once we determine what we're going to be doing, we're anticipating that we'll need funds from this fund for that. Okay, you can go to the next slide. So now we're going to switch gears and talk about other aspects from the HHS budget highlights, just some updates. This is the next slide. So the first one is Emergency Financial Assistance Program. Just wanted to let you know, so this program provides emergency rent, utility, and food assistance. And we're really taking and keeping our eye on that. We've been getting increased uses. On average, we spend about $17,000 a year. And FY '25, we had $6,850 originally. We've added $10,000 in the budget for 2026. So that's, that'll be $16,850 total. But we still feel like the current needs are outpacing the program funding.
Can you, can you pause right there and talk about how much the needs are outpacing the program funding as you see it today?
Okay, so.
Just around, you know, rough numbers?
Yeah, we're in our third quarter right now. We've spent over 80% of our budget so far. And we, so we, like I said, usually, we are done with the $6,850. We are seeing that, we're anticipating that there may be some federal employees coming in. We had three last month. And that's going to be on top of our regular clients that come in. So we, you know, luckily, we have some realigning of funds from our contracts and some underspending that we think will cover us to the end of June. We're not sure how many federal employees are going to come in. But we just want to be prepared in case. And we're going to keep an eye on it because that was just month one. It was pretty much the last two weeks of March. And so listening to the presentation that we had today, we just want to make sure that we have funds available. And we'll let you know at the end of June where we are. But we're anticipating that we'll be okay.
Speaking for myself, I'd, I'd like to know what you think, your recommendations, housing staff's recommendations, and what that number really should be for FY '26. And if we're not covering that in the budget, this is as a percentage of our overall budget, spending an additional $10,000 to make sure that people are fed and taken care of is a trade-off I'd like to see in our, talk about it now, not wait till June or not wait till the next cycle. This jumped out at me as the biggest question to ask you. And I, I think we look to you to say what you anticipated, you know, if it's going to be double, given this, but you know. I, I'd like to know what that recommendation from you is on how we could meet the majority of needs that you would identify. That and the 700 families on waiting list, like those two things to me, like when we talk about if we spend $600,000 on parks or, you know, not just to pick on the parks, but on, on other topics, first and foremost, we should be making sure that people who live here can stay here and people who live here can afford to, to thrive here. So I'd like to see that, just speaking for myself.
Well, I'd say our average real cost are about $17,000 a year, like a thing. And that's been, the numbers have been creeping up since COVID. It used to be, pre-COVID, we were spending about $5,000 every year on emergency funds. And it's, it's kind of stayed up there. I don't really know with the federal workers. I mean, we've had the three, but it could be a lot. It could be a little, we don't know. We're anticipating maybe 10. So that's what we're, but if we had 10, that would be $30,000 for the next three months. That would be over our regular clients that come in. So each person would get about $1,000 of rental assistance. And we have a nonprofit that matches that, that would give an additional $500. The three people that have come in so far have been over income for our regular programs. So we couldn't really assist them with rent. So we assisted them with utilities because that's still kind of, you know, decreases the household cost. So that was something that we could do. And we're removing that income requirement for the next three months, just to kind of meet this need. But that's what we estimated, 10 people over the three months, $30,000 if each one got $1,000, up to $1,000 of assistance.
Plus one, what Debbie said. I also think that the clients we're going to see are probably different. And so it's good that we're being flexible in the program. Be different than what we traditionally get as clients coming through for the safety net services. So this is your food, your rent, and emergency utility helps. But, you know, if Medicaid goes away, what happens?
Lots of meetings I'm going to, they're worried about the Medicaid expansion because those are the people that this would be. And that's the largest number.
Yes, and they gave us some numbers during the COG presentation, how many we had in Falls Church. But also, like, I think they said if it's as bad as it could get, it's a 10% unemployment rate. Like, have we seen a 10% unemployment rate in Falls Church? And what would the impact then be on the safety net benefits that people would need access to? Like, we should probably contingency plan for that big number and be prepared for that so that we can have the conversations in the operating budget or capital budget. Like, maybe we shouldn't spend on these things because we need to take care of these basic needs. So it's good that we're starting to think that we need more than our, we need $10,000 more, but I worry that's still not enough.
I think with our, like I said, with the realigning with the, we've had some contracts come in a bit less than we thought. So we think that will cover us, but we're going to keep an eye on it. The other thing you talked about is food. I mean, I've come to several meetings where food banks, like the Capital Area Food Bank has a 20% loss because of the EDA, the, you know, Department of Agriculture cuts. Their fresh food, so, and that's going to impact food for others. They get fresh food from the Department of Agriculture too. And some of the people that come in need food. So we don't know how that's going to impact because we send them to the food bank when they come in or give them a gift card to purchase food.
Final thought, and then I'll call Lauren, Justine. I also encourage us to think about outreach a little differently. So besides posting, you know, here are the benefits we offer. I just don't think a lot of people in the population are impacted. Will think of coming to Falls Church for help on those things? And so if we can think about ways to communicate that, hey, we are here to support you for these things, like if you need help with food or utility assistance, like, I don't know how we do that, whether it's through the news press or other outbound communications.
Actually, one of the people that came, I think Mary Beth sent, made the referral. So I think once, you know, they, and the other two saw it on the website. So I think, like pushing, we have a lot of information on the website for people that have had job loss. And then also the Resource Fairs, the Don Byer Resource Fair. I think there's another one in May. They have another one next week. So I think they're trying, that one's at George Mason. And so I think they're trying to get the information out that way as well.
And certainly, we can partner with Office of Communications with Mary Catherine. She's been a great resource, so that could be another partnership between HHS and OCOM.
Justine, and then Laura.
For the emergency rent, what are the income requirements or the requirements on that?
The, so when I talked about the income, that usually people up to 60% of AMI are served in that program. But we were removing that gap. And they also have to, the way our program works now is you have to show, it's a one-time emergency assistance. So you have to show that you're going to be able to, like say if it's rent, we're only going to pay rent this month if you can show that you have a way to pay next month. That's how all emergency assistance programs work. Like if you call Fairfax County, if you call Community Services Council, who's our nonprofit partner, you have to show proof that you have either a job offer or social security benefits or some kind of benefits. Because otherwise, it's like we're paying that, you know, that portion of rent. And then it's, you know, it's going to be a loss because you're not going to be able to stay there. So, so that's how it works.
And, and so you said that we are able to lift that cap?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's an internal policy. We run, we take all of our policy changes to the Housing Commission and then, you know, have them approve it.
Okay, yeah, I guess because it's something that I was, based on that COG data, a lot of the federal workers are in the 100-plus thousand range. And so they wouldn't, they wouldn't qualify for that.
They wouldn't. But even if it's, I mean, if, because, you know, I keep talking about the families that came, but one, both were federal workers. I mean, if you make $300,000, if half your income is gone, you still can't meet your costs. Your, your cost burdened like severely at that point. So that's why we made the determination to help them.
Okay.
Yeah, mine was more of a comment. It might be interesting, Debbie is our former employee, and Mary Beth, but looking at the school side of things, you know, the Education Foundation raises money for the same exact thing on the school side. So it might be interesting just to check in with them to see if they're seeing these sorts of, you know, increases as well and just, you know. So, and that might be something also Dana, for, you know, I'm sure you knew that. But that's also something that, another resource for our, for people, resident of school-aged children, that the Education Foundation has resources as well.
Yeah, they're over 350 students that are supported with food and holiday, you know, gift cards, which are used for all kinds of family things, so.
We also meet regularly with the social workers. Rebecca Sharp and Rob in, over at the schools. They make referrals to us as well.
I would just chime in to say, I think the takeaway from all of us then is, let's, let's increase this number, which I also very much support. And we'd rather do it than sort of say, well, let's wait and see. Like, let's go ahead, knowing, kind of anticipating what's on the horizon since it's, it's, it is so relatively small in relation to all of our other expenses.
I'd agree.
Okay. Next slide.
You got out of your group.
It's like, where am I? Well, I can go ahead and start talking. Okay. So the next one is the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program. That program is also, you know, a program that is, I forgot what it was, anyway. So with the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program, we have below-market rate apartments. And we have a range. Like this year is the first year we've had 40% ADUs. And they go all the way up to 110%. We have units at Western, Broad and Washington that have units at that AMI. And we currently have 189 units total. I mean, that's what we will have by the end of FY '26. And so we've had 99 new units added to the program. That's within the past two years. Broad and Washington, we have 33 units. The Alder, we have 32 units. Madera, Falls Church, CO is expected April, May. And we'll have 34 units. So that is a lot of units, the largest number of new units that the city has had in a really long time. We have over 700 waitlist applicants still, even though we have, you know, are close to filling Broad and Washington and the Alder, we still have 700 people on the waitlist. And we have only served Priority One and Priority Two. So that's seniors and persons with disabilities that live in the city and live or work in the city. And just to let you, so we have 17 units that have gone to schools employees and 12 units that have gone to city employees. And then this project, this program also includes annual tenant recertification and property managing. You can go to the next slide.
Of those 700 waitlist applicants, do you, do you know roughly how many of those are existing residents, student, like disabled, Priority One, Priority Two?
I don't, I don't have the number right. Kayleen says it all the time. I don't know what, what the breakdown is. But we have a lot of people on Priority Two. I believe that would be our largest. And we're going, we haven't gotten to Priority Three yet. Priority Three is no relationship to the city. So you don't live or work in the city. And there have been people on Priority Three for years. But even though we have all these units, word has gotten out that we have these units. A lot of people have come onto the waitlist recently. And they are still going to jump those folks that are in Priority Three, that don't have any relationship to the city, so.
I would love to get a rough estimate, since Kayleen already has it, if you wouldn't mind following up with us on.
Sure, sure, I'll bring that to you.
Of those 700, roughly, what are Priority One, Two, and Three? So that gives us an idea of how many are in the disability fa, you know, case. So when we're looking at future ADUs, do we focus on providing more that are ADA compliant or, you know, it helps us form the policy moving forward? Thank you.
I think Kayleen did say that because we are doubling our affordable housing stock, we are, she actually is calling people on Priority Three now, which we haven't been able to do to date. So that was good news because as we, as we talk about diversifying the city, like you have to welcome people outside the city to actually come live in here.
But we also have the, we can't really jump the, the waitlist though. But I think mainly the Priority Three people that she's been calling are those units at Broad and Washington that are the 80% studios. So we have been going through that list, trying to offer those units. And so we're trying to come up with a solution to those units that are the, that studios that are at 80%. You can go to the next slide.
But if you work in the city, you don't necessarily live in, I mean, Priority Two is not necessarily already here. I'm sorry.
So the Affordable Living Policy Update is taking place right now. Expected adoption August 2025. And it outlines affordable housing goals, strategies, and action plan. It's now part of the Comprehensive Plan. It's an amendment. And we also have a new Affordable Housing Dashboard, which will be the monitoring for this plan. So you'll be able to see in real time every year what we're doing. So we're excited about that. There are 18 goals attached to it. So that is going to be, you know, pretty intensive to make sure that we meet all those goals. And my last slide is just talking about the unmet needs for FY '26. And so I just wanted to talk about staffing for a second because we have a lot of work to be done and not a lot of staff to do it. So within our human services staff, we have two human services employees for all city residents. And they are providing emergency assistance, case management, health services. And within that, we see about 88 clients a month, four clients a day. Each client, an average of about three hours per interaction. Like I said, pre-pandemic, it was about 50 clients a month. So it, you know, has steadily increased and hasn't gone down. 60% of those are emergency services. 30% is case management and mental health. And then the other 10% is health. And then as far as housing, we have two general housing FTEs for all city residents. uh, for all city residents. And I say general because, you know, Fairfax County and Arlington, they have, uh, housing staff that are doing a specific function, but our housing staff are doing everything. Um, so these ninety-nine ADUs, it's a lot of work. We have to, um, prepare the covenant, the first draft of the covenant. Once the, you know, something, a development comes online, we have to manage the waitlist. People call every day. We have to call them. We have to send notice. Um, and then we have to determine eligibility after they get off the waitlist and then they fill their second application out. We have annual recertifications because leases are up every year. We have to check income, make sure they're still eligible. We have to monitor the projects and make sure that the projects are doing things the right way, keeping case files, not putting market rate people into ADU units. And then we have this housing dashboard that we, um, are going to have to work. And then as I mentioned, the ALP has eighteen goals, uh, to be completed within the next five years. And then as far as homeownership, every time we sell a house, we have to do a covenant for that house. We have to review the loan docs. We have to meet with the lender. Um, so just putting all of this out there so you have an idea of what our needs are. So my ask in the budget, it's an unmet need. I know we are not funding staff, but we would like an HHS Coordinator position. That would, uh, aver, that would be about seventy thousand dollars with benefits and everything. And a behavioral specialist for a hundred and seven thousand. And that would assist with the casework and mental health needs. And the coordinator would assist housing and human services with a lot of the administrative work and also meeting with clients, outreach, that kind of thing. That's everything. I have any questions?
Questions or comments for Dana? Thank you for the update on it. Debbie?
I think longer term, you know, not for this budget cycle, but it'd also be interesting to know, um, how our mental health services contracts through Fairfax County, uh, whether it's mental health, case ser, case management, et cetera, how we, um, intersect and, you know, are we getting as much as we can out of those relationships? Thinking like how, if we can't add staff this year, how do we use those resources as best as possible? Are we getting everything that we've contracted for, um?
Did you, Sally had you say that, right?
Well, actually not.
No, that Sally always brings that up. And as a matter of fact.
But I've worked with the social workers for eleven years and talked with them about what services and how we worked with specifically, you know, mental health inpatient placement for students who are in crisis. Um, and I know there are challenges and opportunities there, so.
We, um, we have a meeting. It's funny you said that because a meeting with schools to talk about the CSB and are we getting what we need. And then we also have a meeting with PD, actually next week with Police Department. Uh, Dr. Bracy is going to be there, Leslyn to talk about, um, the crisis intervention services that we are supposed to be getting and are we getting everything that we need? And then we have a meeting set up with the CSB Director. Um, and this was Sally's suggestion, uh, last year, and so I think it was a good one. And so, yeah, you're right. We want to make sure that we're getting what we paid for. And I'm doing that with all our contracts with Fairfax County.
That's great, cause I, you know.
Required meetings with all the directors and that kind of thing, so.
We see the dollar amount, but we don't necessarily see, you know, and this might be the first time I've heard how many clients you're seeing a day now versus pre-pandemic. That was really interesting to me. And also would be interesting to see how, what is that million dollars with Fairfax County, CSB? What is that delivered for our residents? And are we, you know, accessing as much as we can?
Well, I know they are having cuts, um, you know, with services and that kind of, they are anticipating that with their budgets. So they keep telling us that to anticipate that, so I'm hoping that doesn't mean that we're going to get less services. Um, but, you know, it's kind of, we don't know, but they're anticipating impacts to their budgets and staff.
Is that one of the IJ contracts, Wyatt, that we need to look at, or is that?
Um, so we'll be looking, um, we're going to be spending most of our time on the Arlington County contracts. And what we're referring to here is Fairfax County contracts. So we weren't planning to spend a whole lot of time on the Fairfax County contracts, but we can if the council has questions about them.
More that sounds like we're still going to get, charge a million dollars and probably get less services?
Well, I mean, we don't know. They're kind of in the same boat as us. They're anticipating that they're going to have some cuts eventually, but they're, they're waiting to see what's going to happen. So I am meeting with the director after the meetings with the schools and PD, and so we'll be talking about all those things.
Yeah, I just think as, you know, all of these data collection systems are improving and processes are improving, that that would be a great day to be able to see, you know, how many people are, of our population, how many people are needing these services? Are we overstaffing? The presumption is not that we're, you know, over, um, staffing, that we're clearly not as resourced, but, uh, you know, I would just like to have some of that data.
If you look in your budget packet, um, under public, um, I believe it's Public Services, it has the breakdown of how many people are being served by our Fairfax County contracts. It's under the Human Services tab. I think it's called.
I don't have, I only have the CIP right now.
Public Services, in the budget book. And they, they are required to give us the numbers of how many people in the city are served every year.
And the breakdown by services and.
So you can look in your budget book. It'll be there.
Thank you. Sorry, I missed that.
Comments for Dana? Aaron?
Um, thank you for all this information. I know I've mentioned in the past, I'm looking at those ADUs that are coming up to sunset in the next few years. I had mentioned to Kayleen, maybe during the last, last year's housing report, when we were talking about some of these ADUs, you know, was there any consideration not to alarm current residents? But in reaching out to, you know, residents who might be at Pearson Square, for example, and saying like, these units are coming up, or do you want to be on a waitlist for something that may come up in, of this ninety-nine? So that you have, you know, a continuing ADU, given the inability to guarantee what might happen in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven? So again, wanted to just reiterate that request about, you know, just trying to have some of those conversations, understanding that they're sensitive because people are members of communities. Um, and also thinking about, you know, when we're looking at the Affordable Housing Fund, um, you know, if, if the city didn't want to lose those fifteen and wasn't able to renegotiate something with Pearson Square, for example, what timeline should we be on to look at like, how could we potentially expand something like the CCAU program? Cause I thought that Pearson Square AMIs were something at like sixty percent.
So they wouldn't be.
So, yes, so if there's something we could do or some sort of policy, or, you know, where we look at what would, what would, you know, moving those ADUs, so to speak, to, um, four fifty-five Tanner Hill or to North Gate? Like what would that look like if we had to potentially try to rehouse or subsidize at a CCAU level? So that we don't lose families who are in those ADUs, were they to sunset? So I just, given that that's a fiscal year twenty twenty-seven date.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I want us to be thinking about that now in terms of possible uses of the Affordable Housing Fund and what those costs might be so that we're positioned, um, you know, in two years to make a decision on that or, you know, next year to make a decision on that, knowing that people are going to need to plan and we can't just like suddenly have market rate, um, housing costs on them.
Definitely.
So that was, I think that was all I had, but thank you.
Thank you.
Other thoughts, questions? Okay, I have two. Um, so can we go to the slide on the housing preservation? Either the, the one that shows all the different buckets of money or the three things. I mean, so the three things under preservation is the Fields, Pearson, and then Virginia Village, right? Those targets of preservation. So I had a similar question to Aaron. Not necessarily like how we're going to solve it, but for each of those, like, we need to know how much we need and when will we know how much we need to preserve them? Uh, and for Pearson in particular, there's probably a bunch of different options. Like we can negotiate with the owner. We could just move them elsewhere and subsidize kind of like a CCAU. Like I don't know what all the different options are, but sooner than later, we need to talk about how much that's going to cost.
Yeah.
Um, and is the Housing Preservation Fund enough, um, to do all three things? Or how would we prioritize those three areas? So not something we need to do tonight, but I think since we are now doing more long-range planning for affordable housing, I think that's an important conversation to target that preservation item in particular and start talking about options. Um, the second that thing is that we haven't talked about our unhoused population, um, and that's a growing need. I think just anecdotally, we see that there's more people, I think in the point-in-time survey that COG does, I think we're seeing increased unhoused population across the DC area. So we need to do something about that. I don't know what that is. Um, I'm sure that Leslyn and team probably deal with increased cases there too.
Yes, they, um, and Dr. Bracy has also worked with her as far as the case management piece. Um, and they, you know, they've addressed that. It ha, it is taking, I mean, that, those three hours per person, those, you know, those take a lot more time, but we are working them, but yes, we have seen an increase.
I had things escalated to me last, you know, during the warm months when we don't have our hypothermia shelters. As the weather warms up again, I'm anticipating that you're going to have more interactions in the community and people are going to escalate to the police or are going to escalate to HHS. I don't think we want to criminalize being unhoused, but when we get complaints about what they do when they're in parks or in front of homes and like, it's a really difficult situation to, to solve, but.
Well, and our, our local post office now is locked at night because of a unhoused person, you know? And so it, it, we are, we are starting to feel those impacts and just how can we support that population?
Yes. I don't know whether it's a affordable housing fund kind of discussion, but somewhere we should talk about that sometime?
Well, we have a, um, we have a, a, a group in the city and PD is a part of it because they have an outreach, um, officer. And so they go out together, him and Leslyn, and work with people. Um, and so, I mean, we had an incident last year where there was a large concentration and we, you know, spoke to folks that were affected and the businesses and residents. And we were able to kind of mitigate that situation, but I mean, it's the type of thing you don't know. And Leslyn talks to a lot, as a matter of fact, she has offered three, um, homeless residents housing this year that were eligible to receive housing. The housing was on the table from Fairfax County and they didn't want it. I mean, you can't make somebody, um, you know, go into the housing. You can only present the options. So that happens a lot as well. So, but yeah, but we are working on that.
Yeah, and the, the good news, bad news about having more parks and places for people to aggregate and congregate is that as those warmer months are coming, there, um, folks are spending the nights in our parks, which, um, isn't ideal for them or for the residents, so I agree. And the needs assessment.
And that's one of the things that the needs assessment will find out, you know.
But serving on the commu, the Arlington Community Justice Board, this is a, not surprisingly, a huge regional thing and they are criminalized in Arlington County. So if you go to the bathroom outside, because there are no public bathrooms, you could be arrested and then you go through jail and then it's a cycle and, you know, you're released and you have, you still don't have any place to be. So there's recidivism and this is a, uh, one of the main topics of conversation with the CCJP right now. And it's thorny.
Any final questions, thoughts for Dana?
That last one that I meant to ask earlier, on the needs assessment, um, how does that relate to the Affordable Living Policy? So we're going to see the policy come back to us, and I thought that part of the policy was a needs assessment or planning for needs. And so timing-wise, how does this needs assessment in fiscal year twenty-six factor into the policy that we're adopting?
Well, this is a recommendation of the policy. Um, the needs assessment is one of the recommendations, so that's why we have it in here.
Okay.
Um, it was originally called a Homeless Needs Assessment, and so we're expanding it to make it a Community Needs Assessment. But we're trying to get, you know, a handle on the, you know, is there an actual expansion of homelessness by how much? Like and how is it affecting us? Cause we have homeless that come here from Fairfax County and other places. And so the shelter actually is the one who asked us originally for this needs assessment and they are going to participate. So that's why we have it in here.
So this is mo, so this is heavily geared towards an unhoused needs assessment?
And it was talked about with the ULI, TAP, Gordon Road, Brady, you know, whether we're doing that. Yeah, whether we're doing what we have, building it out. Is there enough need to build more beds?
Is there a need for a day shelter, that kind of thing? You know?
It's the chicken to the egg.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for bearing with us tonight.
Thank you.
Three B with the EDA. Before we get to solid waste, we're inserting or continuing, sorry, that's the end of the sheet. I know that's, it was like only crumbs. Oh, okay. Thank you.
You can go home. You relieved the duty.
Okay.
So ju, just as a quick introduction for this, um, so with the Virginia Village Acquisition Strike Fund, the City Council put in one point nine million from capital reserves. Um, and the EDA put in a nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of its funds. The source of the EDA's money historically is that came from, that derived from the proceeds of the Petolnick property, which was sold, um, in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen for the Harris Teeter Building. Um, I've provided a memo to council that lays out some options, uh, for the council's consideration on, um, uh, treating that nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the EDA, uh, returning it to them either in chunks, all at once, or not at all, um, and variations on the theme. And, um, and tonight, the Chair of the EDA, uh, wanted to describe for the City Council, I believe, if the funds were returned to the EDA, what the EDA would intend to do with those funds. And so that was, uh, the purpose of tonight's briefing.
And like a whole lead-up.
And, um.
Took the air right out of it, so.
Well, you're going to talk about what you're going to use it for, which is the exact.
Yes.
Five minutes, Ross, you have five minutes.
Five minutes. Yeah, actually, that's why I prepared remarks to just keep some guardrails in this presentation. I only have two slides, by the way, and this is the first one, so. That's right, yeah. Just to prepare you guys. Uh-oh, I don't know where the third one is. Um, anyway, uh, thank you guys for your patience. I think I was supposed to be here a few weeks ago, but I had a, an impromptu vacation, uh, for a week in Anova's intensive care unit. So glad to be out and I will say truly, uh, it's good to see all you guys. I'm not sure I would have said that before. I've experienced, I'm just kidding. Um, so as, uh, as Wyatt had mentioned, uh, I think last month, um, he circulated a memo about Virginia Village and the funds. Um, but let me start by saying that, um, the EDA has been very proud of the collaborative partnership that we've had, the city and staff, housing, uh, in the endeavor, um, to preserve affordable housing in Virginia Village, uh, over the last four years. Um, and I think as most folks here are well aware, and the partnership that we had with Wesley Housing in that pursuit, um, who played a central role, um, you know, that relationship has, has dissolved, uh, resulting, I think, in kind of a reorientation, uh, and a rethinking of how we pursue that affordable housing development at Virginia Village, or if at all. Um, and the EDA is, is continued to remain committed, um, to assisting the city and staff, um, with, with that development. Uh, and you'll see that in part of our twenty twenty-five work plan. So in the past, as Wyatt had mentioned, um, a major source of our participation in, in the Virginia Village endeavor was contributing a little under a million dollars in the EDA funds to acquire additional properties, uh, in an effort to promote the broader assemblage, um, of what had been envisioned. And it was always intended, uh, at least in the EDA's mind, that that money would be returned, uh, in some way. And I think that was initially, not I think, I know it was initially contemplated, um, through the refinance of the loans associated with the project that would in turn, um, recapitalize and, and refund that money to the EDA. Um, and without that nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, or some portion of it, the EDA is really left with very little funding. Um, a little under, I'd say about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, some of that which has already been committed as part of our twenty twenty-five work plan. Um, and then of course, the meager transit occupancy tax, uh, that we receive on an annual basis. So given the current circumstances, um, surrounding our, our collective plans, uh, for Virginia Village and the fact that we're now in need of funds, uh, for our twenty twenty-five work plan, um, we've raised the question again, uh, with Wyatt as to how we can secure reimbursement for those funds. And as Wyatt had mentioned, you know, there's several different reimbursement options, uh, all with various merits. Um, and while past opinion, uh, with the EDA may have been to just ask or demand for that money back, uh, in one fell swoop, um, from budget surplus or capital reserves, uh, I, as well as the EDA, feel that, um, such a demand is unnecessary, given the circumstances. Um, our preferred option out of the three that were outlined in that memo, which we feel is fair and tenable for all parties involved, i, is to do the following as it relates to the nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars contributed by the EDA. One, uh, transfer to the EDA, uh, the remaining four hundred thousand dollars in unused Parklet CIP funds that went unspent by the city. And as you recall, the EDA had, uh, worked with Andy, um, and, and city staff, uh, to, to. And as you recall, the EDA had, uh, worked with Andy, um, and, and city staff, uh, to, to develop three separate parklets. Um, the final parklet, which is in the alley of South Washington, uh, which has been put on hold indefinitely. And then the remaining balance of that $525,000, uh, would, uh, that remains in the acquisitions, uh, I'm sorry, the, the remaining $525,000, the balance of that would remain in the Acquisition Strike Fund. And truthfully, the reason being, the EDA just does not have, uh, a place to spend that money. Uh, and so as opposed to asking, um, to perform some financial gymnastics and make some unnecessary decisions, it doesn't make sense for us to, to demand that money back at this time. But, uh, in order to solve for our, uh, planning, uh, and, uh, revenue stream, which is always nice when you're putting a budget together, um, we have asked for a return on those funds to structure it effectively as a loan, um, with what I would consider a mutually beneficial, uh, interest rate, which I think Wyatt has proposed, which is, I think, 100 basis points over, um, Consumer Price Index, which is fair. Basically, that results in about $25,000 per year, um, in revenue. So effectively treating the $525,000 that would remain in the strike fund as a loan to the city and just asking for, uh, a nominal amount of interest in return, which again, will help us from a planning perspective. And so, uh, while the EDA feels it is justified in this request, nonetheless, uh, we still felt that it would be beneficial to council, uh, to see, uh, for you to see where we plan on deploying those funds to the benefit of the city and business community, there is a plan to spend that money. So Cindy, onto the final slide of this presentation, thank you very much. One thing that you will see here in contrast to past years, um, our EDA, uh, will be refocused on delivering, uh, economic value to our city through, I think, more tactical endeavors. We have spent a considerable amount of time, uh, as an EDA and EDO over the last decade focused on big projects. Um, but I think it's bo- both, i- it's time, both in terms of real estate market cycles, uh, and business life cycle, um, that the EDA focuses on delivering initiatives that drive economic impact to our existing businesses, the number of which has grown substantially, uh, over the last 10 years. And additionally, um, I think it's more important now than ever that we do everything that we can to immerse ourselves in every possible effort to drive sales and growth in businesses for all the businesses in the community, not just, uh, street level. Um, and what you'll see here in our 2025 work plan, um, I have asked all of our EDA members to own and champion specific areas of our work plan, as opposed to it being this kind of large nebulous ownership across the EDA, uh, and to work with staff so we can leverage our collective efforts to drive, I'd say, as much maximal effort, um, or as said, outcome as possible. And so while, uh, this is not a formal year in review presentation, uh, or a work plan presentation to the council, uh, I'm still happy to answer questions, but first and foremost, as chair of the EDA and on behalf of our members, uh, I am respectfully requesting, uh, that you honor our collaborative partnership by committing to recapitalize the EDA's funds, uh, which it gladly contributed in years past to advance a council, city, uh, and community initiative, and we look forward to continuing that collaborative partnership going forward, so thank you.
Thank you. We have questions and comments for Ross?
And just one thought for the council's, uh, consideration is that I think it would be an opportunity to resolve this with the budget, um, approvals on May 12th, um, if the council are ready to do so.
I just want to say, Mr. Leggins, thank you for the partnership that the EDA has had with the city council on this. It has been thorny, was another word I heard. It's been quite an odyssey and I appreciate, um, what the EDA has put into it as well.
Thanks.
Taken a lot of brains, a lot of thought, a lot of, uh, cooperation and collaboration.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And we're not done.
Uh, can you just, oh, sorry. So the four, this 440 roughly would be, this is all intended to be spent in 2025 and then the 23, 25, whatever the, the income, annual income would be the follow-on to these?
Yeah, I, I would say that this is where we're looking at allocating money for 25, but I think some of these projects are going to last beyond 25, uh, and then the ongoing revenue, there are special projects that come up, um, things that, requests that come, in some cases, from council members that the EDA takes on. But outside of a very meager amount of transit occupancy tax that we get each year, which we effectively build up a reserve, um, we, we don't have, uh, really any meaningful revenue coming in that we can continue to build future budgets on.
Right, yeah, I just wanted for everybody's clarification of understanding.
Yeah, we spent a lot of our.
You have 440 and then you only have $25,000 after that is like a big gap in that. So spreading it over a couple of years or whatever.
It's going to take some time to build up a reserve, um, until and unless, you know, the council decides to reimburse the EDA for some of the additional funds that have been committed. But again, these larger projects, I think, will take a few years and we'll build a budget with the money that we have. Um, it's just the way that it works and, uh, we'll do the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you and thanks for kind of giving some concrete, um, suggestions or insight into what it is that you would do with the money. I think, you know, obviously, in light of the budget, um, a lot of these things are sort of supportive of businesses, but my hope is that, you know, with the money, you're also nimble, just like during COVID relief, we're going to have businesses that are, you know, heavily affected by whatever economic, you know, recession that we're going into. The area, you know, generally has been more recession-proof in the past because you've had a, you know, better federal government support for the region during recessions and that's not going to be true, um, going forward. And so just thinking about, you know, uh, whether it's bringing back things like the YFTE program, like I don't know the returns on that and those sorts of things, but, you know, thinking kind of what the COVID era relief looked like and whether this funding can go towards those efforts over the next, you know, couple of years, because the money will be more in your budget than it is in the city budget.
And I think that that's a fair point, um, you know, we're, we're obviously, um, planning based on the information that we have and the information that we had at the beginning of the year, but things continue to evolve and change. But I know that collectively, the EDA members, um, are always open to reallocating money, even within our work plan to solve for some of those, what I would consider kind of crisis issues. And so while this is the plan, things do change, uh, and if there are alignment and interests and things that we need to do to help support our businesses because of what I would have called a black swan event, but now seems to be a, a daily recurrence, then we would certainly do that.
Other questions? Am I hearing general consensus with the reimbursement proposal that Wyatt shared?
Yes, I, I would support it.
I'm in support of option three, I believe it was, that you're describing.
I'm also going to give you any money.
What's that?
No, option three is the one you just described.
The one you just described, I'm like, I don't know.
I don't know what number it was in his memo, but I certainly hope it wasn't give us no money.
Okay.
Let me be clear, I support what you just presented.
Does the May timeframe work with EDA planning purposes, like if we don't get to it till?
That's fine. We, we expected that, which is the reason that I wanted to get in here before the entire budget was baked.
You, the other, I, I had mentioned the May 12th budget vote, it could also be done in that, in the last budget amendment and that would actually make the money of it about a month faster. So that's maybe actually a better way to do it.
Because it wouldn't go in fact until the fiscal year July 1st, though, if we did it with the budget vote.
If you do it with the budget on May 12th, it would be July 1. If you do it with the budget amendment, it would be as soon as you adopt the budget amendment.
So May is kind of what you expect.
It'd be great.
Okay, so if we could have staff figure it out, that'd be great. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Thanks for being patient with us and coming at the end. Except we are not quite at the end. Okay, anything else on this one before we move to solid waste?
Only if he doesn't have a microphone.
Only if he don't have a microphone.
Okay, so we have solid waste fee concepts, um, and we have, um, Lonnie Marquetti, our solid waste coordinator on the phone. So Lonnie, uh, does a great job every day taking care of all of, uh, uh, our customers who, who receive curbside service and the entire city with all of our solid waste programs that, um, and, and, uh, she does a great job with that. We do have, uh, Andy here at the table. Andy's been working with the team to sort of update the presentation that the council got in October. And I did get some comments before this meeting from some council members saying, you know, it is a long presentation and it does have information the council has seen before. Um, and if there is a desire to sort of get to certain slides, just to have a discussion about those, we could sort of cut to the chase if, if that is the desire and it is late at night. Um, I did start this, uh, meeting off saying that, you know, we have, staff has some concerns about implementing this, um, in time for the coming fiscal year. Um, we can talk about that. I know the treasurer's on the call as well, she's dialing in from a conference out of town. Um, and she's been trying to think this through just from, uh, the administrability of the bill. Uh, we would need to prepare an ordinance, um, uh, change that we have not begun drafting on. Those are a couple of the things that, uh, we would need to do. But maybe, um, I'll, I'll keep, uh, I'll make any of those sort of comments after the presentation. Maybe Andy and Lonnie, like if we were, what, what is the council's desire to kind of go through the full presentation, which we could do, um, or did, are there certain points where you want to get to?
I did compare the two decks, um, from what we looked at in October versus now. There are a few numbers that are different and I think it's basically mostly because we took out the leaf collection and so the numbers look a little different and we've refined a few other numbers in there. But so I don't personally need to go through the whole deck again. I guess for me, what's changed from October is, I remember leaving the October work session, I think Laura, you were in the audience then, is that we were kind of like split. We're like, hey, we want to do something, um, but we couldn't quite figure out what to do. Since October, every time we've talked about solid waste and composting, you've had various members of council saying, hey, we really need to solve this. Uh, and it felt very unsatisfactory to just leave it out there as a hanging issue, uh, and for some of us for 10-plus years, right? And so this felt like an important time to bring it up again, to figure out whether it's feasible. Obviously, operationally, we want to make sure it's feasible, but this has been long discussed, I think, by many members of the community and certainly people who've been here longer than I have probably have heard the public comment. In my opinion, this inequity issue only gets worse as we add more multifamily and more condos to our housing stock. I think this problem gets harder to solve each year, so I just want us to keep that in mind. So my preference is probably not go through the whole thing, maybe pull out the new things for staff to point out to us and then we can talk through those options and operationally whether we can do it or not. How does that sound? Okay.
Andy, did you want to start? Sorry.
Yeah, no, Lonnie, well, uh, maybe let's start, if it's okay, on slide five. So we'll skip over the first couple of slides you all have seen.
This is the one that was different when I compared it with October to now. The October one had 1.1 million because it had 250,000 for the leaf removal service, which frankly is mainly a single-family and townhome offering, but I could see why, you know, you'd want to pull it out. But maybe you guys should talk about why that's different.
When, what this stands for is we're using our contracted costs with ADS. So the, the, the costs that are directly related to the curbside service. We, um, that's, that's what we were trying to do, is let's get right at the costs associated with curbside service. The, the, any other cost is going to involve staff and in truth, the staff serve the entire city. And, uh, so Lonnie and her service, she, um, serves commercial, uh, property owners with recycling programs. The recycling program, you know, all, all the things that we do. And so this is kind of focused right in on that curbside service, that's the rationale.
Got it. So it's $950,000 baked into the tax rate now. That is, if I remember the presentation later, about roughly a penny and a half.
That's correct.
So yeah, if you jump to slide seven. So, you know, this is kind of straight up $310, you know, kind of annual fee per customer. This is kind of what would break, break down kind of the, the net impact for various different property values in the city.
One thing that I thought was not here and I had to reference the five-year outlook is what our total housing stock is. So we have 7,000 total housing units, um, 3,000 of them get curbside. The other 4,600 are multifamily and don't get curbside. That is our 20, according to the five-year outlook, that's our 2025 housing stock. I think that's helpful information for people to keep in mind is that right now that 950,000 is spread across 7,000 households. In this model, if we move to a fee, you would only divide it by the 3,000 households that get the service. That helps set the stage, I think, for what the math problem is.
And I think you could say, you know, the 950,000 is spread out over the entire tax base. And so every, if someone comes in and buys a cup of coffee at Starbucks and pays the meals taxes, they're covering a portion of that 950,000. I mean, because in truth, it's, it's covered by all tax revenues. But your math, you know, does track as well. The reason there's the difference between the fee, uh, the tax reduction and the fee is because of, there's a, a large body of people paying the, the tax and, uh, a smaller group of people will be paying the fee.
So I, obviously this chart bothers me. Um, you know, the people with the lowest property value are going to have the, have that impact. You know, and, and speaking as someone who, you know, has a big family and has, you know, a bigger house, I mean, I, I, is there any way to, I, I don't know how you could do it. But I don't, you know, I don't know if it's a percentage or something, but to me, that just, that bothers me.
Could we go back to the cost of solid waste? Because I thought about that, too, like, which is why I think there's that variable pay as you throw, like, because that would be a bit more equitable way that if you make.
I mean, frankly, I, I would be happy for our household to pay more of our share to help cover people who are on the lower end of that property value chart.
Well, that's that pie chart of the cost of breakdown of the 950. So if I remember correctly, it was 60-some percent, 64% is the actual service of going door-to-door to pick up your trash, like the actual amount of trash is the tipping fees, right? So the, the cost involved in providing that service is waste management or ADS, whoever we use, coming by each building or each housing unit and providing that service versus the actual amount of trash that I'm creating in my household. So that made me feel a little better that like, it's not necessarily that I'm a household of five and I probably have more trash than someone who's, you know, an empty nester. Because that's the same amount of work, whether you're going to an empty nester's house versus a household of five. And that's what's reflected in the cost, six, you know, two-thirds of the cost is that actual service versus the amount of trash that household generates.
So if you jump to slide 10, um, so, to ref, so, so this was kind of a scenario that the team came up with to reflect a variable rate, that if you, you know, had two bin options for, for, you know, households in the cities to pick from, like what the fee might look like. And the fees aren't that as dramatically different as you might think for the reasons the mayor is talking about, like a lot of your cost is fixed, whether you show up to the house, whether there's a 35-gallon bin or a 65-gallon bin there. So you can debate, you know, it can be a policy decision on how you want to make those rates different. There's analysis and you got to predict how many people are going to pick each one to be able to cover the total cost of the program, which is makes kind of doing a model like this tricky, but that's some of the discussions staff's had on, um, how we could potentially structure something like this. And it gets at, I think, the mayor's point about, you know, a lot of this is the fixed cost of just showing up and for, at your kind of curb of your individual home.
Yep. Justine?
Something that makes this chart look particularly regressive is the fact that anytime we do a tax cut, it has a bigger, there's a bigger tax cut for the homes that pay more in property taxes. And so that's sort of, uh, like any tax cut we do is going to, is going to, or property tax cut that we do is going to have that effect.
No, and I understand that, but I'm just, you know, those high, obviously, those more expensive houses can afford to pay more, you know, and, and I would assume, I'm making assumptions. But, uh, I, I understand that point, it still bothers me a little bit, though.
Yeah, I think I've struggled with this for the same reason that Laura is articulating. And that's the sort of, we think about tax and tax policy is sort of redistributive. And so when you then say, well, we're going, you know, to remove this service and there may be, reasonable, you know, justifiable reasons, right, for doing so, that you do see that net impact and it looks so stark on those, um, households that are much more, you know, below the median household value. And so that's where I'm struggling with it as well, you know, also recognizing that the variable fee is. You know, also recognizing that the variable fee isn't really um may not be justifiable in terms of staff resources for the size of the city. Um, and also the, like, the bins, you know, I don't necessarily, like, we don't produce a lot of trash. We use the compost egg system a lot. And it's like, but I don't necessarily need a thirty-five gallon bin, like, that seems wasteful to me. I'd rather put my one trash bag in a sixty-five gallon bin and not produce more plastic to get a new thirty-five gallon bin, right? So I I don't, I also just don't want to, like, have to replace everyone's bins to get to some proxy, so I don't know if there's a way, you know, to and and I don't know if other proxies are better, if there's a way to do something based on, like, square footage of a house that makes a variable rate, or if there's, you know, some some way that you institute as we seemingly are authorized to do, you know, uh, reduction or deferral or an exemption, so that if you do have such a stark net impact on property values that are that much lower than a median income, that that people have some relief or way to seek relief when, you know, you're suddenly adding a two hundred and fifty dollar fee in three months that they've never anticipated and may not understand, like, why is this even showing up on my tax bill when we haven't been having the conversation, even though we reasonably have had condo owners coming to us um raising this concern. And for the condo owners, you know, I I do want to say I appreciate the concern that they're raising. Um, I think more recently, there's been some more statements about, you know, being doubly charged for things, and I don't think it's like doubly charged for things. I think as um the city manager was saying that you're talking about the entirety of the tax base, you know, paying into kind of something that the community realizes a benefit from writ large. Um, but that being said, yeah, if you are, you know, a four hundred thousand dollar condo, like sixty dollars of your overall taxes is going toward, you know, residential, curbside, trash pickup, or, you know, a hundred and twenty dollars of your overall taxes you're paying if you're an eight hundred thousand dollar condo or going towards curbside pickup. Um, and so I think, you know, I I want to have a better sense of, you know, if we were to move to a fee-based system, like, what does that look like? What does enforcement of that look like? What are the questions we're going to get from people about that? Um, and also I think it raises questions about, like, what we're doing with the composting at all. I think that seemingly, you know, it's been taken off for fiscal year twenty-six, but I do think that, like, it would be hard to then introduce a third bin and um charge a mandatory fee for composting. Like, I don't know that we could legitimately do that as opposed to keeping it a subsidized program if we decide to continue with a subsidized program, like reducing, like moving to a fee-based system in its entirety.
Wait, did we say we can't add a third bin somewhere?
I thought that you had introduced this year's budget not including a third bin.
That that's correct. Um, if we went with a fee, kind of, then everything's back on the table again. But it is not in the budget um as presented.
Yeah, I mean, my point for, in a fee-based system, I think it's very difficult to impose a mandatory fee then solely on curbside, people saying you have to pay a fee for composting when we then don't require buildings to have composting. So it's its own issue of, like, assessing costs that people could question whether they should have to bear if their mandatory costs imposed on them by the city. So like, I think it's a
Isn't it just like would be a bundled solid waste fee? And we offer trash recycling and compost. You don't have to compost if you want, but it's a flat fee for everybody. Three hundred twenty, three hundred thirty-two dollars, kind of, if you get the solid waste service from the city. You don't have to take the third bin if you don't want. I hear in Arlington, since they moved to it a year ago, it's been very popular um compared to their opt-in program when they piloted it, so.
Should we go to the composting slide, just to be able to talk about it?
Dave, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm, I do. Um, I I've noticed from the staff report an absence of data on another alternative, um, which is to include the pickup once a week. Uh, as we have for single-family homes, once a week for condos, and then once a week for all multifamily housing. So for me to make a decision here, I need more data and I need that other option fleshed out in as much detail as we flushed out this option, and I haven't seen that so far. So I make that request again.
Oh, I I should also add that I I requested an additional option, or at least information on an additional option that may be somewhere in the middle of that, so that the city wouldn't be um in the business of doing the pickup itself, but I was wondering, I know we can't do tax credits, but what, you know, a payment to affected buildings looks like if you take a penny and a half on the assessed value of, you know, of the assessed value of that property and what the taxes paid are, what a penny and a half looks like and whether the city could essentially, like, make a payment to an HOA to offset the cost of what the HOA is paying in the
So let let me just say that that I need that data, and I think we should have that data as another option. There are two ways to achieve equity. The one way is to take services away from everybody and make everybody pay. Another way to achieve equity is bring other people into these basic services. So um, I'd like to see that other option flushed out before we make a decision on this uh issue, and it it has not been so far flushed out by the city work, um, city staff work.
I think there are a couple of slides on that, so maybe we talk about what the compost one looks like, and then we can get to those slides to answer Dave's question.
I don't think they answered the question. I didn't see the data in them, and that's why I'm raising it right now. Thanks.
So so maybe let's go ahead and jump to uh man, I, my, oh, these are my old glasses, so I think it's slide fifteen. So Lonnie, uh, I think you know this info best. Can you, can you take a minute and walk through fifteen and sixteen for us? Talk about it like it is today?
Of course. Sure. Um, so again, this this information is essentially the same back from October of last year. Um, the information uh that Mr. Snyder is asking for, um, I believe he wants to see some type of a table breaking out the costs of, you know, sized dumpsters, what the annual cost would be, um, and and we can provide that. Again, this work was done uh back in the fall, um, so I have not reached out back to American Disposal to get accurate today pricing. Um, with that said, this particular item, if we were to bring it in-house, um, two, two, I guess, topics I would like to touch on is, uh, the first, um, City of Alexandria does offer um services to quote-unquote "commercial" buildings. Um, but they have it written out to where it essentially is just four units and lower. Um, and no other locality offers uh cur, just any type of commercial dumpster services, um, just out of their general I guess, city-county services. Um, but serving certain condo units, um, as I mentioned before, or as Mr. Shields had mentioned, we would have to amend the ordinance. Um, this would essentially adjust, address, excuse me, equity concerns. And I would have to work with um property owners or property management groups, HOAs, um, to kind of build a specific type of level of service that was, that is essentially within our power. Um, and that would obviously meet the building. Um, the challenge is, in that same token, um, would be, we are very limited to what we can uh essentially provide uh just based off of our contract. As I mentioned before, this is not in our contract. And it is essentially, it would have to be an amendment. Um, there would obviously be a cost increase. Um, and as I mentioned back in the fall, there are three buildings, um, Falls Plaza, Madison, and Park Plaza, or Park Towers, excuse me, that fall within the hundred percent residential buildings. Um, condos with mixed use, there are a total of six, um, and apartments, twelve plus the thirteen, and then you have all the commercial properties uh that would also fall into this. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this slide essentially gives us a overview of what each building could potentially cost us annually. Each building can range, again, level of service, what they're currently do, um, providing their their residents in the building, frequency, et cetera. Uh, can cost anywhere between fifty to forty thousand dollars per building. Um, dumpster sizes that are within our contract are four and eight-yard dumpsters. Um, and again, we break down the eligibility. Do we want to only service just owner-based condos of no commercial at all, or do we want to add in mixed-use condo buildings as well? Um, as I mentioned, um, the mixed-use buildings are going to be a little bit harder uh to manage mainly because of the fact that you have one dumpster or a dumpster area that services that building. Um, so it's going to be hard to figure out what refuse is coming out of commercial buildings and what refuse is coming out of residential.
So I think as we talked, we've talked about this over the last week, I mean, for those three buildings, we've come up with a number, it's fifteen grand, twenty to twenty grand apiece, you know, money can get kind of more accurate numbers, but that's the kind of money we're talking about. Um, I think the challenge is, we've talked through this, is every situation is different. I think somebody made a reference earlier, well, we'll just offer one pickup a week for everybody. Well, the way a lot of these buildings are laid out, like, there's sort of sized dumpsters that can't wait and just get trash picked up twice a week or once a week, and so they need to be picked up more often. And then some include some services for the residents that we don't provide to the city, and some don't, and every one of them is different, and so it's, you know, all solvable, but opens the door to other challenges and, you know, um, we'll do these three buildings, and then what happens when the next building owner comes in and says, well, you're doing it for them, like, where you run the risk of relying, continuing to move and getting more complicated, and I think that's where we've got hung up on it.
So let me, let me just follow up. I appreciate that, but there are also complications to moving to a fee-based service, a lot of complications. So um, beyond just the um the um, the unfairness of of moving to the kind of fees that you're talking about. Um, so I do want this data, I think it's essential, so that we can really make an an education, an educated decision on which of these options we're going to go toward, if any.
Did I hear that out of all the jurisdictions that are on fee, Alexandria that might offer some of this select service to their multifamily buildings?
As Lonnie said, for, you know, buildings with four or fewer units.
Yeah, but nobody else is in the business of hauling trash from their condos or mixed-use buildings. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, that's the, there there are no models that we can point to of anybody else that would be doing this. And and in some of the conversations we were having about this a year ago, to explore that line of service, we need a lot of time to do that and a lot of effort to do that. So I think that that's one of those things where it would be good to have a vote of council to direct us to study expanding into that market before we spend any time.
So you're saying, so so why, you're saying that an individual council member doesn't have the right to ask you for data so that fundamental decisions can be made that are going to affect all of our decisions about options and how to move forward? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it is. It, you know.
Well, I reject, I reject that. I'm not prepared to vote on this until we can flesh out the the true options. We've been presented one. It's obvious that some people support that. I am making a request as a member of city council that we have relevant data to make the decision. Thank you.
I think it's relevant that there are no other jurisdictions that do this, which probably in their much better staff, bigger staffs than we are, right? So I think that's an important data point, and no one else has gotten in the business of hauling trash from their multifamily buildings, probably for a reason, probably because it's complex. Um, Justine?
Just a little quick question. Um, so I'm wondering, in terms of, if we were looking into the, or, so just to go, because we're about to talk about organics.
Yes, I want to get back to that too.
Uh, can 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 I ask my question about?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, with the organics then, would that, how would, how would we set that up? Would that be wrapped into a flat fee that we would charge, or is that something that uh would require a lot of extra um funding, and so we'd have to come up with funding in our budget?
I think there's two paths, like, this gets folded into the fee conversation, and I think the one slide we looked at previously had like some extra twenty-two dollar fee, you know, that that I think we calculated would be. We wanted to implement that just in kind of regular course of business. I think we estimated it's an additional fifty-five thousand dollars in annual operating costs, so that would be an operating budget for next, decision for next year, and then there's a one-time cost of up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to purchase new bins. So a a one-time hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar investment and then fifty-five thousand dollars a year.
Can we go to the next one?
Sixty-five, I'm sorry.
Is it slide fourteen, Laura, on that? Um, because, I mean, the one that shows the compost fee?
Good, well, we, sorry.
I had it up earlier. Um, uh, in March, we just approved the new compost crew contract for a hundred and ten thousand. And that's for five hundred eighty-two households. So I think the subsidy is bigger than seventy-seven thousand.
The the subsidy for seventy-seven is just for the curbside aspect of it. Compost Crew also services our drop-off facility behind City Hall, and then they also pick up from city facilities as well. So I deducted that to just kind of flush out just the seventy-seven for curbside.
But seventy-seven is for five hundred eighty-two households, and Andy, you just said it was fifty-five thousand or so for the entire city to get a third bin.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, sorry. Which is so less than that.
Sixty-five.
So the, so the calculation where that comes from is up on, up upon the the board, so you know, an estimate for the additional pickup per home, so we've already got uh ADS doing a, a, you know, yard waste pickup that folks home to the city, so this would be the additional cost. An estimate of the tip fees, so that's your net new operating costs, and you subtract off what we're paying on the compost crew subsidy, and that's your um, net new cost to the city, sixty-five thousand, not fifty.
So can I just ask, on the, on the net impact slide? So the earlier one, that was if you take, if you take everything out of the, if you decrease the tax rate and then you implement a fee for service for curbside, does that mean that the net impact of these numbers is whatever it is, plus twenty-two, if you had three bins?
This slide, it shows two oh one, two oh two, three oh two.
Yeah, so it is, right? So we were talking about three-ten, so it's up to three-thirty-two.
Yep.
Instead.
Correct.
This gets more complicated. We laid in the, you know, the two variable options, but if you, the A section, that's
I think it was, yeah, I think that gets to my question about if it were a wash, right, then then maybe you don't create a new equity issue, but I think that you're imposing a mandatory twenty-two dollar composting fee on people now that's above, what, a three hundred and ten dollar fee or otherwise fee, so it's not your, a wash. We're saying we're going to impose a mandatory fee on just curbside customers now, when we can't impose the same thing on buildings. So I mean, I'm just saying, if you want to be concerned about an equity issue, we now need to be concerned about the reverse equity issue that you're telling people they have to pay twenty-two dollars for a service they might not want, and that you can't actually compel buildings to provide.
So I just want to be aware.
So I just want to be aware. Buildings, I guess, that, like, multifamily buildings can't get our composting service. Or Justine?
Yeah, I don't
Just, uh, so I just want to make sure that I understand. So that twenty-two dollar fee, that takes into account the sixty-five thou, the the one hundred seventy-five thousand and the sixty-five thousand that we're talking about, or is that just? the, the one hundred seventy-five thousand and the sixty-five thousand that we're talking about, or is that just one?
Six, sixty-five thousand dollars divided by your three thousand sixty-six customers, it's just your annual cost.
Okay, so we'd still have to come up with the one hundred seventy-five.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Gotcha, thank you. Very good.
Um, there are a lot of variables here that we are discussing, and all the good ideas, and I would really like to be able to do something like this. My fear is that this is way too complicated to implement with this current budget. That we can't, that we're all, everyone has a different idea of what we could do, and if the seven of us are confused or just trying to weigh things on, and how we're gonna explain to the public in four weeks to get into budget. So my request would be to do an actual study, like we did with the um, when we did property assess our property tax relief abatement. Um, we really sat down and crunched the numbers and looked at different things, and Jody Acosta was involved, and Nikki and Karen, and there was an H-SAC member and a community member who really weighed and looked at all the ways that the assessment and the abatement would affect different people and how it would affect a different person. So I feel like that, because we have so many questions and different ideas, and, and Mr. Snyder's idea, and how do other communities do it, and all those kind of questions, it would really be worth some true study, instead of just for session Q and A.
I think someone from, if you do a study, that someone from ESC should be looking at, if you're imposing a compost fee, you're actually improving your, your, your community energy action plan by reduction in, you know, what's going into the landfill. There are other costs that if we are agreeing, we've stated we're gonna hit all these goals by reduction in greenhouse gases, all these other things by twenty fifty, twenty forty. Um, that, that's a cost that we're gonna incur another way, so throw another factor in there.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not disagree, I'm, I'm not questioning the value of an organic bin. I'm saying that you're gonna get questions from some portion of three thousand curbside customers as to why there's a mandatory fee being assessed against them, and only them for composting services.
Because they're the only ones that can access composting services. Just like how the reverse is right now, our multifamily buildings can't access solid waste, so we're not charging, we shouldn't charge them, right? If we're only offering composting to the single family in townhomes, it's just part of the solid waste fee. Yeah, Laura?
Um, and so I know Mayor Hardy, you and I talked about this, and um I've heard from several school board members who are concerned about how this is gonna affect revenue and the revenue share. So is that something that we would also need to really look at? Um, because I know that the schools, the, the several who reached out to me are, are a little bit panicked um that this could really hurt, you know, they rely on that one time funding for buses and, you know, what have you. Um, so you're smiling, so I don't know, it's a good smile, but.
Wyatt's thought of it.
Uh, the schools can live with it, it'll be.
Oh, really?
Uh, but it's.
That's not the right answer.
Oh, okay.
So it would, you know, if there was a reduction in the tax rate, that would come out of the traditional principles of revenue sharing and a fee traditionally would not be in that, and so uh it is something that we, we would wanna think about and uh and see if there, if there's some solutions to that.
Okay. It wouldn't feel there, to spring it up, that's how I see it, we would hold them harmless, I guess.
Yeah, but I mean, it, it sort of goes to your point, it's.
It is, of course, I agree with, you know, the piece of it's not fair for people to pay for a service, they're not receiving, of course, I agree with that. But there, the devil is in many, many details of this, and, and, you know, uh, I think maybe uh working group with environmental, also some school reps, and, you know, Mayor Hardy and I have talked about just community, whenever, the, the communication piece on this is gonna be so critical because it's very, very convenient in trying to help residents understand why the changes could be made if we make that change. It's just gonna be really critical, so.
On the communication side, I also think it's important to communicate to the residents that we're listening to, where there are inequities and where we can improve the process and procedures, and how do you make it, you know, as we continue to add multifamilies, how multifamily buildings or apartments or different types of housing, how are we making it, how are we making a policy that moves forward in the right direction? So I, I don't want this to be a conversation like, okay, let's do a study. We do a study for a year, and then, oh, well, it takes a year to implement, so then there's another year, and we're to the, the next twenty years when we're have, when we're on council then, still discussing it. So if we go this direction, I just wanna make sure we are setting, you know, a timeline and understanding what we're trying, what is the policy goal we're trying to accomplish? And what are the limitations or opportunities?
That's why I'm also still interested in getting an answer to my question about if there were a payment to an HOA as like an interim solution, it's not a tax credit, but it is essentially.
And I mean, that's, there's ways to solve for that bad problem, right?
In mass, yeah.
You take it from here and redistribute, or you keep it the way it is and you make it a credit to whatever my call.
Justin?
Um, I guess the, the bigger context for me is that we, you know, we can see these numbers up here, but we're also, beyond these numbers, we're also um going to have a property tax reduction. And so the overall impact to a lot of homeowners is going to be a lot smaller than, than these numbers that we see here. Um, and so given that, my concern about pushing this off to later years is that this is probably the last year that we're going to be able to give a tax break for the foreseeable future. This is the last year that we have development coming online. Um, and so it's gonna be much more difficult to do something like this in later years. So I would be in favor of, I guess, my, my question right now is, if we were to move forward with a flat fee, is that, you know, none, none of the complicated different sized bins, nothing complicated about um how this would be implemented, just a simple flat fee that would be added to the um, the bill, would that be something the treasurer would be able to implement?
So the treasurer's on the call, um, Jody, do you wanna speak to that?
I'm here. Yep, I'm here. I, hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
I go, okay.
Stadium, the stadium for me, this is too off.
Okay, um, yeah, so I would say that uh based on my, can you guys, can you hear me?
Sorry, we're trying to get rid of the, so.
Yeah.
One moment, wait, one second.
There's a big echo across the TVs, Jody, we're trying to turn one side.
Okay.
Yeah, the sound's coming from up here.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to adjust them, but it's not making this better.
We'll just listen to you surround sound.
There, there with you. Jody, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, um, based on my recent experience with adding the CDA charges to the West End property, it's the um, uh, that I had to work with Munis on, it's taken us almost a year to get those charges uh added and to go through all the um, uh, the data analysis and the uh, um, the programming that we needed to do to be able to add those charges onto our bills, uh, so that we didn't have to add them manually. Um, so I would think, based on that experience, that we would need almost a year. I mean, I, it may not be a year, but I definitely don't think we can get them added in time for this December's, uh, you know, the FY twenty-six real estate bill. Uh, because we have to have those ready to go to the printer uh by about mid-October. Pardon me? Does some, does?
Well, we're trying to fix the, thank you. Um, Jody, so with the, the West End project though, that, like, was that a fixed? Like, I'm, I'm talking about if we just did a super simple three hundred and ten dollar uh fee across the board uh for uh people in single family properties. Would that, that would be still take, take nearly a year to implement? Or would that be simpler than what you did with the West, West End?
It would, it would be simpler, yeah, it would be simpler. Um, I don't think it would take as long to implement if we're talking about one fee, like, you know, part of the problem that I was thinking about is if we had the thirty-five gallon bins and the sixty-five gallon bins, and, you know, then we have to find out, you know, which property has which size bin and bill accordingly, you know, for that, uh, that certainly complicates it. But if it's the same fee across the board, yeah, that simplifies it.
Okay.
I still, I still, I still would be uh, uh, leery of getting it done by this December's bill. Just based on my experience, part of that's because Munis is slow to work with, but also part of it is our, you know, the resources, the lack of resources that we have in, in the office, so, you know, uh, it's competing priorities, right? Um, I just, I just, I would wanna talk to Munis first before I could commit to that.
So that's like hardcoded in our bill? We don't get to control what goes in the bill?
Yes, what, what's hardcoded in the bills? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing. Yes, adding this, adding. Everything that we do with the billing has to go through Munis, we don't really have the IT support in-house for that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but there's other questions that I want to ask now, um, so I guess along those things, I'm, um, I mean, I would lean towards a similar option of kind of flat fee for everybody, um, and I do feel like we've kicked the can down the road for ten plus years, and it's really feel like a good year to solve it once and for all. I mean, I know that we're all elected office not to, not to keep prolonging problems, but actually solve issues, and it feels like one that for residents over time, it's certainly one where, again, the problem just grows, like as we have more multifamily and condos, it'll be harder to solve each year. So while we may have some people in the three thousand households that will see a bigger impact, if this is the year for the tax rate cut, it does make the impact a little easier to swallow. Um, and compared to all the options that staff has, and I actually think staff did a good job giving me the data, and I, I want, you know, asked for lots of data. Like, I think it's actually pretty straightforward, um, given the options and the pros and cons of each. The communication part is probably one that requires more explanation to make the average person understand how this changed for them. But I actually think you've done a good job actually laying out the options since October, and maybe I thought about it a lot more um since October, but I think it's actually pretty clear, given what you presented to us, um, what the pros and cons of each are. I'm not sure whether further study would actually help us.
I would also be in favor of moving forward, or doing our best to move forward this year. I think that this, as we've heard from many residents, this is something that's been going on for decades. This is a year where we could potentially actually do something, and also acknowledging that people that live in condos um actually have even lower um property values, um, tend, tend to have lower property values than the single family homeowners. And so from an equity perspective, even though this seems uh not quite as progressive as we'd all like, it's still a fairly progressive um solution.
It's also for the fifty-five percent of the city that has a multi-family. Could you go to the slide that has the jurisdiction comparison? I thought there was a slide for that. And I think, I know the answer, but I wanted staff to clarify. I think you compared like, here are the places that do fees and here are the places that solid waste. So Fairfax, London, Lea, Birmingham, do we know roughly what their housing mixes? I assume they're proud of the single family? For the people that still do, build a tax rate.
Yeah, they don't have those ratios, um.
Our budget, just in our budget Q and A.
Terms of assessed value, maybe, or something.
What percentage of residential versus commercial?
Yeah, so I'm not sure we would have that in a, but it is.
It's in our budget Q and A, yeah. Like, I know we all think of ourselves as like our, like the little guys, and the little guys all have as part of the, one of the public community guys. We're little, we should keep it like, you know, everyone else, and like, the difference is our housing mixes has changed. And we're now fifty-five percent multifamily, forty-five percent single family in townhomes, and so it's just seems unfair to let it happen. So we are different than the jurisdictions in that right hand column. Andrew, you're getting a really great deal, Lana, you're doing a great job negotiating. Yeah, I have a three hundred and ten dollar flat fee compared to five hundred dollars now, like Andrew, you're doing a great job managing those contracts. Other thoughts?
I just wanna make, I mean, I just wanna, look, I've, I've made various thoughts, I mean, I've made various comments on this. I, I don't wanna lose sight of the fact we're talking about a so-called tax break, but it's not actually a tax break, it's an increase in assessed value for people that's significant at the time when they are, you know, facing increased costs and increased inflation and lots of uncertainty. So when I ran the numbers, it turns out that I think we were talking about something like the tax rate looks like a three point, what, four? Three point six percent increase when you're looking at all homes. But I think that when I looked at the budget Q and A and looked at the, whatever it was, median assessed value for uh, single family homes and townhomes, that it turns out to be a five and three quarter percent increase. So you're talking about for a median home of increasing their taxes this year with a flat fee included by seven hundred and fifty dollars plus like the additional twenty-five dollars in utility increases, so I don't really wanna lose like sight of, you know, median home value increases of some of like almost three hundred dollars this year.
Given that it's getting late, I think that we should maybe take a struggle to figure out what the best options are to give staff some direction. And I would say that the two options in my view that we've discussed, or the two main ones, would be um, do a flat fee and try to push for that this year, or take a year study and see what maybe comes of it, and I guess, uh, kick the can. I don't know, I don't know if there's another option that was widely discussed, but I think those seem to be the, the main two.
Sounds like staff do not recommend getting in the middle of multifamily and condo buildings.
Um, that is correct, I mean, here's what that business would look like. For, if we're gonna address the equity issue, we'd be offering, I, you know, our multifamily the service for free, and it would be an opt-in service. And so from a budgeting perspective, we'd have no idea what we're getting into, is this, uh, it would be very difficult to manage. And um, and if the council did direct that we study that, we, we would need time to interview all of them and try to assess what service they would want, and then we can, you know, have some sort of thing where they would commit to do it if they're, if it were offered, and then we'd have a budget number. It would be a big budget number. Um, and so, uh, those are some obstacles, I think, to, to that business model.
Yeah, so, um, the audio sound from the room is really deteriorated. Jody, have, have you had some issues with that as well? So, um, it's been very difficult to hear the last discussion, not, not from my system, but apparently there in the room. Um, yeah, I mean, you're, you're trying to jam this now, I think we ought to ask single family homeowners how they feel about it. Because what you're doing is you're, you're taking, removing a service and charging them a fee which exceeds any value that they get from um, from a um, um, from the tax reduction, regardless of, of what the single family home is, except when you get up to the very, very highest level. So, you know, I, I, this, this has not been adequately discussed in the community, you're making a significant change. I will tell you that removing services in the past has been a very controversial issue, and I'm concerned about an inability for all the citizens to, uh, to really weigh in here. We've heard from some multifamily um, um, uh, housing, which I'm concerned about that, obviously, but we've not heard from single family homeowners, and I think they have rights here that you're trying to jam this at this point. So, um, I think we need more debate about this with fully fleshed out options. I think that's fundamental fairness to the community. Otherwise, in the name of equity, you're actually pursuing an inequitable process. So, uh, I just, I have deep concerns about this, and I think we oughta, you know, I don't know, I, 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 there's not been a significant amount of community discussion to make a fundamental change like this. And then furthermore, not only are you now charging a fee that exceeds any benefit in terms of the tax reduction for many of our citizens, but you're now mandating services, the um, the composting that they may not want. So it's, seems to me it's a double hit on a certain amount of community to benefit another part of the community, and that will simply serve to divide, I don't wanna do that. What I want is a legitimate public discussion about that, and the only way to have a legitimate public discussion is to ask our city manager to do what he And the only way to have a legitimate public discussion is to ask our city manager to do what he ought to do as part of his job, which is collect, and it's not all that hard. Just call the thing, the multifamily housing, how much are you paying? What are you getting? Uh, and that will give you at least some sense about how to move forward. So I think this is a fundamental issue of transparency and, and fairness for all the community, all the community. Not just selected elements of the community. So that's my fundamental difficulty with this entire issue right now, where it's going, how it's being jammed, and how there needs to be a more, much more thorough public discussion of this that we, uh, than is being talked about as a process moving forward. Anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
I, I was starting with the not getting services you're paying for, when you're paying for the cost of removing trash from single-family homes curbside. I mean, it's a, it's a different shifting cost, it's a different, and I understand the concern about adding costs to that, but we're, we're not... I mean, we're asking people who receive the services to pay for the services they're receiving. And we're saying, if you're not receiving the services, you shouldn't have to pay for those services in this instance. So I don't think that there's a, a fundamental, I don't see, I see it as a fundamental way of saying you're paying for what you're receiving. And while there may be some billing technicalities and some other things that we have to iron out, I don't see that. I see it as a policy discussion on how to do that. I don't know the history of what other, um, things you're referring to with regard to, um, charging additional fees. If it's stormwater, I think the stormwater has been done by your percentage of your permeability on your yard. Um, and I think if it costs more to receive, to get your trash removed once a week, we should be paying that cost. It shouldn't be subsidized by others. And I also have a strong belief that, um, pushing on, uh, composting and making that available to everybody is absolutely going to do it. I just look at my N of one. I don't, I don't pay for compost right now because it seems like, oh, well, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily want to do another fee, I can do it myself. And I'm an example of, well, if you told me how to compost, well, then I, and I got a bid delivered to my driveway that I would be composting. And I think that behavior, uh, will be changed by us, you know, that, that might have to be something that's pushed out and not pulled in. Um, I'm not familiar with the data from Arlington, but it doesn't surprise me that the uptake has been significant. Um, so I also think that this is something we've discussed as a community. Geez, for a twenty, I forgot the woman's name has come in and said she's had public comment for twenty-nine years about the same topic. I don't think it's, um, thirty-eight years. I don't think it's a new topic. I don't think it's something that hasn't been discussed in public. But I do think the communication of it and why is really key. Um, so anyway, I've been, I, I'm still supportive of moving forward with something. I also think that we as a body are creating policy and that our experts and staff should be figuring out how to implement it. Um, I'm, you know, I can't tell the treasurer's office how they should be implementing it, but we can set policy to say, you're receiving services, we should be charging you the cost of the actual services. I also don't think, you know, I think that on the composting, you should also be paying for the composting, not necessarily subsidizing that. Uh, if it costs twenty-five dollars per household to compost, then that's what we should be charging, um, moving forward. Because we've done the subsidizing for a number of years and seen who's taken that up so far. Um, so I'm rambling, I'm sorry, it's late. Bye.
I like getting it, just getting it, we're midnight, and we still only have one more item, just to do the straw polls that staff has some direction.
So to start, and maybe we can go around, I would be in favor of moving forward this year with a flat fee and, and seeing what we can get done and hopefully seeing if the treasurer's office can, can implement it.
I would not be in favor of that because I feel like it's too rushed and there's not enough community engagement in it. And if we're going too fast, we're going to make mistakes. And I think it's really important. When we went from a, everyone had their own van, and then there was the little green van, there was a whole rollout and plan for that. And I feel like this is, we're not quite ready for that. So I would support doing a study in the tradition of the General Assembly, do a J-LARC study, a local LARC study, and figure out exactly what we should be doing correctly and get community engagement with that along the way.
I would like to do something this year, flat fee plus composting.
Sorry. I would, what she said.
And I'd like to wait a year and also get additional information about what we might be able to do for the lowest sort of, um, median value homes of any potential relief in terms of what this flat fee would mean on any parts to them. But would still like to determine as an interim solution whether we could do this sort of payment to HOAs, even if we can't give a tax credit. So I want to, I would like to see what that number, what those numbers come in as.
Uh, you know, and I, I, I agree with Mayor, I, this is very tough because obviously for all of us it's tough. Um, I, you know, I see, completely understand the inequities in people paying for services that they're not receiving. Um, but I, you know, I, I feel that there's a lot of, you know, the staff is, is, um, is indicating to us that they're worried about implementing this the correct way. I don't feel comfortable on, um, the school side that I really understand how this is going to impact the schools. Having been on the school board, I know that, that revenue share is important for one-time expenses. And so that, I would also want more information about that. But I also understand what Mayor Hardy is saying that, who knows when we'll be able to give this kind of a, a tax break to cover that. So, um, I don't know. I, I guess I'm like right in the middle of, if there was any way that we could move a little bit faster and maybe try to get the data we need and get it done this year, but I wouldn't feel comfortable until we had some, some more questions answered. So I don't know. That's, that's a non-answer.
It's hard, it's hard to organize in front of the staff.
Yeah, yeah.
Where, what direction staff.
Um, maybe we could just see if there's, um, why maybe we could, um, take a day or two and sort of, you could go through your notes and see like, are there, can we get some of this data? You know, I know Jody's virtual, so, you know, maybe we could revisit this one, not to, just one more time. I, I do agree with Mayor Hardy. Like, I do think it's going to be hard, who knows if Laura, you know, in the, in the near future, be able to do a penny and a half. Um, but I agree with, um, Ms. Connolly too about the communication piece and making sure that it's all communicated. So I think, you know, if we were to do it this year, we, we really have to move fast and get all these questions answered. So, um, I don't know, maybe we could come back and, or maybe you could follow up with us and, you know, give us, because you probably need to digest all of this too, and, um, I don't know.
Maybe I'm missing something, but this reference to like a penny and a half and doing it this year and not having an opportunity, like, isn't the penny and a half, like, we're just talking about the penny and a half would come off in any year. The penny and a half isn't a tax break. It's totally unrelated to going from one twenty-one to one eighteen and a half. The penny and a half is just a representation of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in any tax year, regardless of what year.
If you have a two and a half cents, it's just referencing like you would have an overall tax burden reduction.
Well, you're paying more, so I mean, I think.
You reduce it by two and a half cents, and then you're increasing it by whatever cent you're depending on where you live, but. So it offsets it in a year where you've seen a reduction or you're seeing an increase of, and that's out.
Yeah, I guess.
Has an increase than it would if you have a tax increase and you add another.
I guess I'm just saying, I mean, I guess we're using the word reduction differently. Because I, I would be using reduction in terms of what a flat payment would be, like, had we not had a tax increase. So the rate is incre, the rate is decreasing, but people's taxes are increasing because of the assessed value. And so I guess I'm, I'm just saying, we're talking about increases in the, yeah, in the overall environment. I just don't want to lose that. And this one and a half pennies would be a one and a half penny regardless of whatever tax rate you were at in whatever year.
Correct. But in this year, it would represent a four penny total tax rate decrease. And if you're in a condo or multifamily building, you would not see any fee, and you would just see the four cent cut. If you're a single-family in townhome, you would see a four cent cut plus three hundred and thirty-two dollars. And so if we don't expect future tax rate cuts, making this change is that much harder because you don't have the, the first two and a half cents to help make it easier on people. That's why I think the timing matters to this. And if we're only going to have more multifamily and condos come online, they will have further subsidizing of family and townhomes, and so the numbers would be that much harder to overcome. So that's why I think timing matters for now. Uh, operationally, I guess I also question for Jody, I heard her say that if it was a flat fee in response to Justin's question, that was easier to implement, but she would also want to call me and just be sure. Like, clearly, as Debbie said really well, like, this is our perspective from a policy perspective. We want to hear, operationally, you know, is that feasible if we went to the flat fee model by the end of the year, because the bills would go to December, but I'm guessing that you all worked hard on that through the fall. Um, and so that would be, if Laura's in the direction, could we take a couple days to think about it? And at that time, could we investigate whether that would be feasible to implement by the end of the year? Um, if it was just a simple flat fee?
As if it's not, I mean.
Yes, you asked me.
But that would be, but one of the things I asked for is if it's feasible to actually get it implemented, or otherwise, we don't need to talk about it anymore.
Okay.
I think, I think I heard you say yes, you can talk to Munis, is that right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And Mayor, just on the straw polling, I, I don't think we got everybody.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Dave?
Yeah, so, um, I think there's an asymmetry of data and a lack of critical data to explain to the public the different options that are available to deal with the so-called equity issue. And in essence, you're asking single-family homeowners to pay more for the same services. That could raise a contrary equity issue. There's not been adequate discussion of this. And I will tell you, prior experience for taking away services and charging fees has only occurred after a very lengthy community discussion, which has not occurred on this issue. And I mean a real serious community discussion about options that are fully fleshed out. That has not occurred. Uh, I agree that there may have been some advocates over the years, and I respect that. But this has not been the kind of discussion that is raised to the level that some council members want it raised to. So I think you were making a serious mistake by moving forward in this way at this time on this issue. So just record me as not supporting that approach. Thank you.
Got it. Any final thoughts on this? Sounds like we'll check back in in a few days, if possible.
So just maybe it's, I'm clear, like, what are you expecting from staff in a couple days?
Operationally, can we do a flat fee by the end of the year? Laura, I think we're going to hold.
Just understanding how it's going to impact the schools and the revenue sharing agreement and all that. So that look, that's more, I think, Mr. Shields and Ms. Bawa question.
All right, but I, I will say to council, there's going to be a hundred more questions. And you're going to come back to us and say, well, can you get, can you answer that question? Um, and that's just the way it's going to go. And, um, so one thing I, I would like to do, we'll answer what questions we have tonight, but, uh, we could also draft up a scope of work for a study group so that you can start to get your head around kind of what that would be. Because I think you can tell there's some passion around even what the scope of work would be. And I think that might be something that could be handled timely. And, um, and then that's a signal that we're move, moving forward in a concrete way and, and get people appointed to, to work with staff on that. And we can put some milestones on that and, and turn that around. But, so we can deliver, I, I would like to take away from this meeting also the task to draft that up so that you can start to think about that.
Can I say one more thing? The other fear I have is that commercial properties are going to start to say, like, you know, a restaurant, standalone restaurant, will want to know why they're paying the fee and still, because they're paying property taxes. But.
They don't pay a fee because they don't get serviced by her.
They do, they pay the taxes, the same as a condo owner does.
Under, under the, under the flat fee, the, I mean, I think all the business community.
So that, but is that counted in what we're counting as?
It would, yeah.
Because I saw a couple different things there from Lonnie. Some were mixed use, some were just residential.
That's if we got the business serving them. I don't think that's the staff recommendation.
Oh, I thought, no, I thought it, anyway.
It's a flat fee against single-family.
Only people who get serviced. Thirty, three thousand people who get serviced. And not the other seven thousand.
Is the flat fee arrived at by dividing the cost of the service by the number of the?
You need to be on the microphone.
Yeah, I don't have a phone.
So the, just, can I just summarize so that I'm clear? So it would be figuring out, um, what the, like, how we might do a school sharing agreement if we were to move forward with a flat fee, if it's even possible to implement in Munis. And then, um, I guess figuring out what maybe a scope of work might look like for a year-long assessment of this.
And we, uh, we can lay out dates so that, you know, it doesn't have to stretch out for a whole year. But it would be, the idea would be, it would be implemented then with the next budget. But the decisions could be made in advance of that.
So I guess it would be three, three things. But I guess in terms of the, the school revenue share, I would say that would be, probably be something that council would need to discuss how we'd handle that. It probably wouldn't be, I don't know, staff, unless staff would come up with a proposal for how we might handle that.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying. Like, I just would like to hear from our experts, Mr. Shields and Ms. Bawa, how they would, what they would recommend. And just simply what the impact, I don't even know what the impact is and really understand it, so.
Okay. Does that seem helpful?
Yeah.
A little more direction than in October.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we're going to have. That's right. Um, so we do have the ordinances, uh, just to, make sure the council's aware of kind of what those ordinances look like and what they say. And Karen, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, save the best for last, so, okay. Well, budget. Um, good evening, Mayor Hardy and members of the council. We have for you four ordinances. And the intent is that we bring requests first hearing of these, uh, first reading of these in the next meeting on the fourteenth, and then followed by two public hearings, um, on April twenty-eighth, and then, uh, May twelfth. And, um, we're going to be advertising the tax rate, so that's why, uh, we're bringing, um, these ordinances. Um, the first one is the budget ordinance, and that requests appropriation of funds for, um, general fund, uh, the utility funds, uh, other funds like affordable housing and cable fund, and then school funds and CIP. And there are attachments to this, uh, staff report, which includes the budget question and answers. Uh, we are trying our best to address all the questions in person as much as possible, but all the ones that have more analysis and tables and charts, we have included those from the prior meetings and any of the emails we have received so far. And also the attachments include the city manager's, uh, presentation, the PowerPoint, and the whole budget document along with council strategies. Uh, as previously discussed, um, this, um, in the, the affordable housing and the CIP have, uh, been discussed with the planning commission and the housing commission. So that's one ordinance. Then the ordinance number three, so that was ordinance number two. Ordinance number three is for the, uh, real estate tax rate, uh, no, the tax rate ordinance, which has all the three rates in it. One is the real estate tax rate, which is, uh, proposed to be advertised at, uh, a dollar eighteen and a half, one point one eight five per hundred eighteen, uh, per hundred dollars of assessed value, uh, which would be a reduction of two and a half cents, uh, from the current rate, which is a dollar twenty-one. And, uh, previously, um, discussed also that would have an impact of, um, four hundred dollars to a median homeowner. And the value being, uh, median house value being a million, uh, twenty-two. And this would be reflected in the December twenty-twenty-five and June twenty-twenty-six bills. And, um, each penny on the tax rate is six hundred and thirty thousand. The ordinance number, uh, so this ordinance also includes, sorry, personal property. The ordinance number, so this ordinance also includes, sorry, personal property and machinery at the rate of $5 per hundred dollars of assessed value. That is no change to the current rate. And the third piece is the personal property for vehicles at $4.80 for every hundred dollars of assessed value, and that's no change from the current rate. Ordinance number three is, sorry, ordinance number four now, is a 2.7% increase to the stormwater utility billing rate. The current rate is $20.77, and it would increase to $21.33 per 200 dollars of square feet of, sorry, per 200 square feet of impervious area. Again, this goes into effect July 1, and it's billed twice. And with the tax bills, average increase of $10 per household.
Per year.
Per year, yeah. Ordinance number five is a 2.7% increase to the city's sewer rate from $10.86 to $11.15 for 1,000 gallons of usage. And that would mean an impact of $14 increase average per year. And also an increase of 2.7% to the availability fees.
And just one note on that, there was a request that we consider doing a drainage fixture unit that would apply to residential new builds. We haven't put that into this ordinance. And the reason is that typically you go kind of all one way or the other. And either you go all DFUs or you go the charge per house. And so didn't see a lot of models for the mix. The commercial is DFUs just because commercial can be really small or can be really huge. And so there's this scalable way to get the fee. So I just wanted to acknowledge that there was some discussion of that, and that's not in this proposal. One other element of it is just the administration of it. For the commercial ones that do come along, it is a lot of staff time just to calculate the fee. And so there was some concern about that on the residential side as well. Be happy to answer any questions about that.
And that concludes my report. Yeah, those are all the four ordinances. The city council is discussing FY '26 budget for the city of Falls Church. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, which may be affected by the proposed fiscal policies. As a result, I am in a group of three or more people who may realize a reasonably foreseeable direct or indirect benefit from the proposed ordinance. After consideration, I am electing to participate in this transaction because I'm confident in my ability to participate fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Karen, on the ordinances or just wanted to discuss this one?
Concludes my report. Open for questions.
I just have a couple of questions. Maybe this is for the Q and A document. But I would be, I'd like to see what other jurisdictions have with their car tax. And my understanding is that they did raise their car tax back to the $5 range. The other thing I'd like to know is, going from $4.80 to $5, how much additional funding would that, or revenue would that bring in? My rough calculation was that it could be $100,000 to $200,000. And over time, that can be a significant amount of money for our road paving. And I'm deeply, deeply, deeply concerned about how far we've fallen behind on, on road paving and our road budget. So I would be in favor of raising that back to pre-COVID levels either this year. And if I don't have support this year, then I'd push for it next year. But that's something that, that stood out to me.
Well, we'll include that in the next Q and A for Monday's packet.
Thank you for putting the chart on the, in the Q and A with, you know, overtime, three or five or 10-year average on increase in each of the budget categories. I thought that was interesting. And then in population and number of seats in schools. One thing we talked about, do you also add to that staffing levels increase, three, five and 10-year? Number of staff in schools and number of staff in the city? Way down outside of the schools already.
We need to get that data from the schools. Yeah, cool.
That's kind of a lax statement, I think, on the expense side of, you know, with all these increases in population and et cetera. Want to see how it plays and how it does in overtime. Because I think we had a lag and then we kind of, you know, both, it's more uneven served. So I think that's important to see that over time, three, five, 10, same averages. Thank you.
Does the math, I think it's like 20% increase in staff for three years? It's going to be a big increase. Do you have a catch-up, so?
But then if you go down to 10 years, you see it's a small percentage, so I just wanted to see.
Other questions?
Karen, I'm wondering if you can, and you don't have to do it right now. I was going to submit it as a question, which I will do as well. But my question is just about the retiring of the Mary Ellen Henderson debt. I know that that was modeled in as we discussed different, you know, other debt coming on and taking its place. And how's that working? Is there additional debt taking its place? Is it, is that contributing to the two, our ability to drop the tax rate? Because Mary Ellen Henderson is off the books. How, how is it playing into that model that we discussed when we did the high school?
It's part of the hidden slides that we had in CIP. There was a slide there, if you pull it up.
Yeah. So it, what it essentially is, is going to pay for the high school. And so for the Meridian High School debt. So with the West Falls project, kind of the whole idea is we're using the capitalized ground lease payments to cover about two-thirds of the debt service for the high school. Those capitalized rent payments are ending in FY '26, and the tax shield is stepping up to take its place. But we always have kind of known that there's going to be, you know, come, some years where the tax shield wasn't quite there and the capitalized lease had fallen off. And so the Mary Ellen Henderson debt is essentially a bridge until the tax shield comes on.
Okay.
And the tax shield will come on because we have that payment in the old pilot agreement where we can plan kind of how those increments step up.
Right, right. There's something in here, which I can't find, so I'll put it in a question, that just made me wonder a little further about that. But thank you for that explanation.
Other questions?
Why, in the Mary Lady, you mentioned staff recommending actually higher tax rate than a dollar eighteen-five? I didn't see that in here.
Well, I guess it's looks of horror.
No, I haven't, I haven't done that in my tenure here, and I didn't know what he was talking about.
So it is, it's, it's equivalent to, I think, you know, an Arlington advertised a penny higher than the manager's recommendation. So it's to give the board some flexibility as you go through options. That's what that's about. But the other approach, you do have the revenue contingency of 500,000. We would recommend you keep that whole, but then you can make cuts in other parts of the budget and make adjustments as you traditionally would.
I said, given the conversation we had at the start of tonight's meeting and the way he wanted, I think we leaned towards cutting. Like, if things went really south, we'd cut rather than try to increase the tax rate to 400,000. That's my sense, but. We're seeing one or not, but more or less. I don't think we'd go any higher than a dollar eighteen-five in light of the economic environment. Okay? So I guess we have no more questions for you, Karen.
Perfect.
We're ready to go first reading on the.
Thank you.
Okay, morning in Warsaw.
My son's coming up, that's right. So the last item is, we do have Mary Beth Afadizian, who is here with Hoffman Associates. And the request is just a preview of a request on Monday night to refer an amendment to the voluntary concessions to the planning commission. And it is to change the VC that relates to the grocer. And it's the, the grocer that has a signed lease at West Falls has a signed lease for a set number of square feet that is slightly below what the voluntary concession is for the grocery condition. And so that's basically the request. There is a graphic in your package that shows where that square footage is and how it would be treated as a retail bay going forward, retail service bay. And that's the issue. It would be referred to the planning commission, and then it would come back to the city council with the planning commission's recommendation on May 12th.
Do we have questions for Mary Beth or Ryan on this one?
It seemed like this was net revenue positive for, I mean, it seemed like this was a benefit to the city to allow this to happen, as in, we wouldn't be losing out on, on tax revenue. So I generally would support that, as long as it's written that way, as long as you've looked over.
Basically, they're going to pay the same lease and they're going to give it the same sales per square foot out of the smaller building. Now you just have an extra retail bay, if I understand it correctly.
That's right. Hoffman has agreed to a higher yield per square foot. And so the net fiscal impact, at least from a model perspective, is there is no net negative fiscal impact with this change. And it does allow this additional space then to go forward and be leased.
Do we have any indication of what we go in the new 6,300 square foot space?
It is a service use that is planned as opposed to a pure retail use. And I, Ms. Abadi. No, it's a, it's a retail service use. So Mary Beth is still with us. I thought maybe she'd fallen asleep at her computer terminal.
Thank you for joining us so late.
Were there questions?
We were asking what the new retail would be for that extra 6,300 square feet space.
Well, we don't have a tenant yet, but we've been negotiating an LOI with a tenant that is a pure service use. So this particular VC, the way it's written, there's a graphic in your packet that shows the square footage that was carved off. That's not the graphic, it's a little bit later. It's a, it's actually a separate graphic that shows the comparison of the before and the after. There you go. And if you go to the third page, you can zoom right in on this, the spaces. There you go. So the original VC assumed a grocer that was about 40,000 square feet in size. The current grocer, the Fresh Market, did not need that large a space. They said they would pay the same rent, whether they took the whole space or the smaller space. That would be more efficient for them. So you can see right next to the Fresh Market, to the left of it, there's a space called A1-105. It's about 6,300 square feet. And with the way the VC is currently written, we still, we would still have to lease that square footage to a service tenant generating at least $400 a square foot in rent. With the way we have modified and asked for you to consider modifying this, the Fresh Market will generate the sales that are needed as though you had a grocer encompassing that whole space, generating $400 a square fit, a square foot. The Fresh Market will generate more than that so that you don't have a negative impact on your financial model that would presumably then free up, if you approve the VC, would free up the carved-off space to lease to any tenant that we could get to take it. And you can see it's a challenging space, it's an oddly shaped space, it's deep, it doesn't have a lot of storefront, and it doesn't have any venting to the roof because the restaurants, excuse me, the, the Fresh Market took all of the venting that was intended for the grocer use. So it really, it's best suited for a service use. We have LOIs that we've been entertaining, one that's kind of getting some traction. I can't discuss it yet, but it would not produce the $400 a square foot because it would be a service use. So, but, that being said, you would still generate an accretive tax revenue off of this. There'll be rent that this tenant will pay, and that rent will go into the calculation for the assessed value of the property. And the alternative, if it stays encumbered with the service use, is I, I will probably not be able to lease it to anyone that I've found so far. So there is no accretive value by that space being left encumbered by the VC as it's currently written. But at least, you know, while you may not get the sales tax revenue from like a grocer or from a restaurant, it would still generate rental revenue that, that factors into the assessed value of the property and therefore the property taxes.
I just had one question about the layout. Does it mean that the, I think in some other layout slides, it showed that there was an at-grade entrance to the Fresh Market and then the, the corner entrance to the Fresh Market? So does this, does the at-grade entrance remain? Or does this mean that there's only the corner entrance to the market?
There is, there are two entrances to the market. One is, if you look to the right in that box, they say, there's a lower level. And that is a vestibule. Thank you for putting the cursor on it. That is a vestibule that's right at the corner of Haycock and Route 7. Once you go into that vestibule at grade, you would take an escalator or an elevator up to the level of the store, which is above that level. You alternatively could, if you stayed outdoors and walked from that corner up towards, you know. Towards the bank, thank you, that's good. There will be an at-grade entrance. Because the grade rises, you will get up to the level of the second floor, which is where the Fresh Market's other entrance is located.
Okay, that's great, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that the A105 wasn't, wasn't eliminating the second floor, so to speak, street entrance that's not at the corner. Because I've had some concerns about the slope of the sidewalk, you know, when it goes from the second floor entrance, so to speak, to the corner. And so I wanted to make sure that people could still enter the grocery store from that street without having to go down that sharp slope to the corner entrance.
They absolutely can. A1105 will have its own separate entrance at grade. Because by the time you get to that at-grade entrance for the Fresh Market, which you can see, I'm trying to describe it. There's a little white area in front of where you've got the management office and the public station, public police station office. There's a, that's a ramp, that's right there. You'll come up to that, you'll come up to the, thank you, right there. And you'll, that, that's a walkway into the sliding glass doors that will take you into the grocery store. You'll be at grade there, and then the A1105 will have its own entrance directly into the store.
Thanks. Other questions?
Hey, Mary Beth, I just have one question, which is actually related for a little bit. Where's the parking for this? Is it parking and garage D2?
No, the parking is directly underneath. So if you look at that. Yes, if you look at that Fresh Market entrance over at the corner of Haycock and Route 7, on that lower level, you can see there's kind of a beige area right to the, to the left of it. That is a parking garage. So this has got one level of parking below the store. They have dedicated, 120 dedicated parking spaces just for the supermarket. And then there's a little extra parking down there that will be for some of the residents of the Alder and a little bit of retail parking. That's general retail parking. Some of it is encumbered by the Tierra and Cantada, who need some drop-off pickup spaces for their, their kids and the parents that are dropping them off. But otherwise, everything is, for Fresh Market, is contained right underneath the store. So you'll be able to drive in, park your car, go out through a sliding glass door into that vestibule at the corner down there, and then take the escalator up or take an elevator up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
And that was going to be the same way with the other grocer, too. The same configuration. They just didn't need to expand all the way over to the left side and take the rest of that space.
I had two, while we have Mary Beth. I think the last update I got from Nolan in the quarterly community meeting was that, I think between April and May, all the transportation improvements were scheduled to be done. Is that still the case?
It's, it's more like May and June. We've had a few things happen with, a few things that we still need to rely upon. VDOT to give us some final guidance on, and Dominion Power to provide some power to. If they, if they keep to our schedule, then we'll get done towards the end of May, beginning of June, with the traffic work. So we're hoping that that will happen.
Got it. And we don't need to talk about it tonight, but when we were looking through the original deal terms and I think Wyatt put together this like one major for us, I was reminded that phase two is coming up on us. And so whenever we want to talk about phase two, Mary Beth, we're all ears.
Thank you. I, I will bear that in mind, I'm not prepared to talk about it tonight.
Oh, I know. Just planting a seed.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions, so thank you for bearing this as a toll there.
My, my pleasure.
See you soon. Okay. I assume we don't want to go through schedule, and we will save everyone. Just playing back, some people were like, we should just do it as part of Monday. Okay? If there's nothing else, I think we are adjourned. Good night, all.
Good morning, Dave.
Yeah. Have a good rest of the night, everyone.
I'm impressed.